Call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. Join us in the later weeks.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, we would like to say that one nation under God, in this council, with the reading of justice for our office.
Dear heavenly Father, Lord, I thank you for this chance here for the citizens, the council members, everyone of Chautauqua here to gather, Lord. Father, I ask that you be with us in the decisions that will be made today. Father, I ask that you pray your guidance and your leadership, Father. Lord, we thank you so very much for our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, the sacrifice that he made to save sinners like us, Father. It's in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Well, I for one, I'm happy to be having a council meeting tonight. We've missed a few, so we have a very large agenda, so we'll try to move through our issues as quickly as we can. First off, I'd like to remind everyone that we are being recorded, so everything that you say and do in this room is documented. I'd also like to remind you that if you are called upon or you need to say something over there on the podium is where you speak from. And you may or may not have noticed on the door, there was a flyer posted out there about disorderly conduct and what constitutes disorderly conduct in this gathering. You want to go ahead and read it, Jason? Sorry, everybody's advised.
I'll have it right up there, so I won't go there. So this is the motion of Jordan. It's twenty-one dash sixty-two oh three of the state statutes. Disorderly conduct is one of the following acts that the person knows or should know will alarm, anger, or disturb others, provoke an assault, or other breach of peace. Disturbing assembly, meeting, or procession, not of a lawful nature, or using fighting words, or engaging in noisy conduct, tending reasonably to arouse alarm, anger, or resentment in others. Disorderly conduct is a class C misdemeanor, so it's an arrestable offense. We're just kind of trying to keep the argument down inside the city council. I just think that business and that maybe we can end well.
Thank you. I need additions and deletions to the agenda. I'll give you one addition. We have a police officer application that we'll need to put before the council tonight, so that'll go right after the council resignation.
Some line in red, Bob.
You got any red? Okay. Good. Any other additions or deletions? Okay, so I need a motion to accept the agenda as written.
Make a motion to accept the agenda.
Got a motion by Ernie, a second by Justin to accept the minutes from this June third meeting. Call in favor. Call opposed. Motion carries. Here I am, municipal court report. Any questions?
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Ernie, a second by Linda to approve the court report. Call in favor. All opposed. Motion carries. Treasurer's report. I have quarterly that will be posted in the paper if approved. I'll note that the one figure in red from the sewer has not been, is on the warrant to get the reimbursement tonight, so that number won't be quite that large. Any questions or comments on treasurer reports? I got a motion by Linda.
Second.
Second by Ernie. Call those in favor. All opposed. Treasurer's report is passing. Warrant register.
I just have one question on the fully equipment. When they come to test our equipment monthly or quarterly on that, and we've had the issues with the water plant and stuff like that, do they address any of that stuff?
The last issue we had, they came out, and two of them, they did all troubleshooting on it, and they couldn't find anything. One of them, the one that's sitting back, they did find some issues with it. We had to replace the battery again, stuff I was going to talk about. They did have, first off, we got billed for it, and I called them, and they took that off. They took a bunch of the things off that they did charge us for initially.
Yeah, okay. That was going ahead. Thank you.
One more thing that I would comment on. We ended up, I happened to put the trash truck back in the shop these last week for two more injectors. We knew they were coming at us, and there may be two more, and I would have put the six that needed to be changed. Thanks for noticing that, Josh. May have saved us an engine.
I understand. Was it blown black?
White.
If you're white and you could smell it.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve it.
Okay, I've got a motion by Justin.
Second.
Second by Linda. Approve the warrant register. All those in favor.
Aye.
Call opposed. Motion passed. Okay. Next, we have a council position resigned for resignation. Well, go ahead. It's in your package, but I'll go ahead and read it for the records. Dear citizens of Chautauqua, council members, and mayor, after much terrible consideration and reflection, I regretfully reach the decision to resign from my position on the Chautauqua City Council. This choice has not been made lightly, and I deeply appreciate the honor of serving our community over the past year and a half. Following thoughtful discussions with my family, healthcare providers, and close friends, I've concluded that personal and family circumstances have evolved in a way that required my full attention at this time. While this decision is not one I take lightly, I believe it is in the right path for me and my local ones. I am profoundly grateful for the trust the community has placed in me and for the opportunity to contribute to Chautauqua's well-being. Though I will step now for my council, though, I remain committed to supporting our town in any way possible. The council wishes, I am happy to continue assisting with managing the city's social media accounts, YouTube and Facebook, to ensure continuity for the community. To the council and mayor, thank you for your collaboration and guidance throughout my tenure. Please let me know how I may assist to the transition of responsibilities. Sincerely, Brenda Dominguez.
Amy, would that help? You can better all the...
Yes, very much so.
Like the motion to accept the resignation with the fact that she stays on as our social media.
Second. Got a motion by Justin with a caveat, second by Josh to accept the resignation of council member Dominguez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed. The vet said we have a empty council seat. We have three open seats in November. Two council members are running for reelection. The third applicant, who unless there's a write-in, would probably take this seat by election. I'm of the opinion that she should probably go ahead and fill the seat now, the empty seat, but that's up to the council. So I'll ask for your input.
We have two applications.
The other was Jessica Morgan. Thank you for your application. But like I said, my opinion is since Betsy already has signed up for an election, that she's the rightful person to put in the seat at this point.
Seeing the motion.
I need a motion.
Make a motion.
You want to?
Make the motion for Betsy to take the empty council seat.
Got a motion by Ernie, the second by Chuck to allow Betsy Coons to assume the empty council position. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I hereby appoint Betsy Coons to the council position. And you'll need to come up and get the score in, Betsy.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of council members. So help me God, do you swear?
I hold a line, please.
Respect your seat.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and let Kyle do the audit and budget. Welcome. I know this is your first shot at this.
First time here. I've been made rounds, but it's a good thing you swore in before I went, so that way I shouldn't have a chance to run away. Yup. It's still usually just standing up here. I don't know where Phil.
And that makes you feel more comfortable?
It doesn't matter where I go. I might stay over here, so I don't have to yell at you across the way, but since we're here to do both audit and budget, just going to go through kind of the audit, a quick synopsis for you. That way, we're not going through it. There's a lot of the numbers in here. We're going to see on the budget for your twenty-four actuals, so we'll spend a lot of time focused on that. As always, there's a couple of letters at the front required in our audit standards. Pretty cookie cutter. Talk about internal control issues. The same two are here. We've seen a lot of small cities. Essentially, talks about how we assist you preparing your financial statement, taking your numbers, putting it in this format for K-MAG, and then the second being segregation of duties. Just talks about, you know, you're a small city. You can't have three or four people dedicated just purely to accounting, kind of splitting up all those duties. So it just notes, that's where the council comes in, asking those questions about those checks and those kinds of things. So just always like to point out that fact. The other two letters, just kind of cookie cutter, pretty boilerplate. Nothing major to point out there. As far as the audit goes, diving in on page one, your most important paragraph in the report is the third one down there on page one. And that's that unmodified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting. Essentially says that we believe, based on audit fieldwork, that the numbers presented herein are a material, accurate representation of what happened during the year. So we issued that unmodified opinion. It's like term clean opinion. It's the best opinion you can receive on your financial statement. Outside of that, the report just talks about our responsibility for the audit, management's responsibility, as well as supplementary information required by K-MAG. You flip over to page four. That is your financial statement. This is statement one. We list out all the funds of the city there. You've got your beginning unencumbered cash balances, or your cash carryover for budget purposes, your receipts, money coming in the door, and then expenditures, money going out the door, to get to that ending unencumbered cash balance. Now, one of the requirements for municipalities is that each fund ends in a positive cash balance. You glance through there, you can see you did have one negative fund. State recognizes that was that one with your grant, with your big project you got going on. They know you're going to have to spend that money upfront and then get reimbursed for it later, so that is allowable. But just always like to highlight that you will see that in there. And that's kind of the reason that if you look at encumbered cash, why it decreased so much, was because you had that kind of big expenditure with that going on. Obviously, you're going to receive those funds and grant funds to kind of replenish, so that was kind of the big change there. Next column is your accounts payable. This is kind of that special caveat of K-MAG that makes it a modified cash basis. These are those bills paid after year-end, for services before year-end. So just to get those expenditures in the right period for budget. And then finally, your far right column is your ending cash by fund by bank balance. And you see down below, it ties to your accounts broken out there by the various types. One other thing I always like to point out down in the bottom right corner is those agency funds we subtract out. Those are funds held by the city, but they don't necessarily belong to the city, or they kind of flow through to the city. Things like your meter deposits and things like that. Just always like to highlight that. Starting page five is the footnotes, kind of the words behind the numbers. I won't spend a lot of time on these, but I'll kind of highlight a few that are kind of the ones that have the most information in them. Footnote number one is, just talks about K-MAG, talks about Kansas budget law, talks about the city. Good to review each year, kind of refamiliarize yourself with it, but don't spend a lot of time on it, because there's not really any major changes in the verbiage or things like that. Footnote number two, there, starting on page eight, stewardship, compliance, and accountability. This one kind of relates back to some statutes and regulations we have to make sure you adhere to. That long paragraph there at the beginning talks about that negative cash that I talked about earlier, cites the statute that makes that allowable. And then the very last sentence talks about how you were in compliance with budget laws. I mean, you didn't have any overspent funds during the year. Following that, you've got some revenue bond covenants that you have to adhere to. One of those is that each year, you've got to transfer a set amount monthly until the maturity of those bonds. So here, we just disclose kind of what that running total is, and then the actual amount of reserves held, showing that you met that requirement. And then that big paragraph there, you also have a net income requirement. You have to hit, let's see what it is. Think, oh, there it is. A hundred and ten percent. Sorry, I missed it. A hundred and ten percent of net income has to meet your debt requirements for the following year. It was three thousand percent, you more than met that requirement. So always like to highlight that you met those requirements. Following page, page nine, deposits and investments. Biggest thing we always take away from this is the very last paragraph there. Just talks about how all your funds were secured in the bank. You didn't have any unsecured funds sitting out there. The next couple pages, page ten through all the way through fourteen, just talk about your debt instruments held by the city. Ten gives you a debt schedule, just gives all the instruments held, what your beginning balance is, any additions or payments during the year, balance at the end of the year, and your interest paid. So just kind of a good tool to have as far as seeing what those debt instruments are. And then the following pages, eleven and twelve, this one just shows those future payments when the debt is going to mature. So this is another good decision-making tool to have, so you can kind of look, you know, are we going to pay this debt off this year? Kind of have that in the back of your mind. The next footnote there, thirteen and fourteen, all the way to fifteen, footnote five, just talks about those finance leases that are on that debt schedule. Essentially has all the same information from that debt schedule we just looked at, but just kind of breaks it down in a little more detail for you. But all that information is just pulled directly from there. Footnote number six, just talks about capers, how much was remitted, and then always that net pension liability. Footnotes seven and eight are kind of cookie cutter. Talk about how you mitigate the risk of loss through the purchase of insurance, as well as how you accrue a liability. It's just estimated for K-MAG. You don't actually accrue this or show this on your financial statement, but we just kind of estimate what that liability is for that time earned by your employees that carries over, things like vacation or sick leave earned. So those are disclosed there. Footnote number nine, inter-fund transfers. Biggest thing we always point to this one is just that you had statutory authority for all your inter-fund transfers to be made. And then finally, the last two, footnote number ten, this is kind of a new one. That's that sewer project you've got going on. We call it that capital project. And here, we just disclose the total authorized, and then what was spent during the year, up to the end of the year, and then kind of an estimated completion date. And then if anything major happened, there footnote eleven, from the end of the year to when we issued the audit, that's where it'd be disclosed. But we hadn't, didn't have anything there. Like I said, the following page is twenty, all the way to forty-six, on this individual fund summary statement schedules. Don't spend a lot of time on that, because we're going to see those numbers in this budget here. So don't surely point out much, but it's good to kind of review that. Gives you an idea of where that money's coming from, you know, is it tax dollars, utility receipts, interest, et cetera, as well as your expenditures. I'm always like to kind of remind you of your four categories. You got personal services, which is kind of your wages and fringe benefits, contractual services, any other services the city's procuring, commodities, things you're buying that you can tangibly touch, and then capital out, like kind of your big one-time expenditures. And then the very last page on there, page forty-seven, those are those agency funds that I talked about earlier. That being said, any kind of questions or comments on the audit itself? Now I'm going to move to the podium for this, so I can flip pages, because this does get a little bit more in-depth with the budget. So I believe Amy printed out there, you've got the budget itself, and then you should, did you print the worksheets for them too?
Yes.
Okay. So the worksheets are kind of what we use to project and then kind of estimate for your forty-six budget. And they've got some notes there as it goes on, as far as changes we made, your thing you told us on your wish list and things like that. So we'll actually dive into the budget itself, and we'll start on page one. Page one is a tip tip. This is what goes to the county. Here, we list all the budgeted funds for the city, your total budget authority for expenditures, and then you've got your amount of ad lorm tax levy. Biggest thing we always point out in this one is that bottom right corner, and that's that revenue neutral rate. With this budget here, we've got prepared, as if you won't exceed that revenue neutral rate, just a little highlight of what that is exactly is, essentially, each year, the county sets a new rate for you based on your assessed valuation to levy so many mills. So essentially, the number of mills levied equals a total tax dollar. As always, that revenue neutral rate essentially is levying the same exact amount of dollars as the previous year. However, that rate's going to fluctuate based on assessed valuation year in and year out. And we'll kind of see that later on. But like I said, I just want to highlight that right now, this one is prepared as if you are not going to exceed it. But I do want to note that the notification deadline to the county, if you were going to exceed it, is Friday. So if, you know, after we go through this and you decide you want to go above it, I just want to make sure that you're aware that you got to get that notification to the county by Friday. Following page, page two, this breaks down some of those county taxes. These numbers are all provided to us from the county. There's just estimates in here of things like the motor vehicle, our recreational vehicle, sixteen, twenty truck, tax, et cetera. And then it just allocates it based on the mills levy to the various budgeted funds, tax levy funds. So really, we just take those numbers and we just plug them in here. Page three, these are your transfers. Looks almost identical to what you saw in the audit. Essentially just lists out any transfers within this budget. You've got your actuals for twenty-four, our projected for twenty-five, and then your proposed ones for twenty-six, and then the authority there for those transfers to be made. Page four, this is your statement on indebtedness. The next two pages, four and five, going to look a lot like that schedule we just saw in the audit. Page four just lists out any geo-bonds, revenue bonds, and then other, which is just your water pollution control loan. And it's just got that same information. Talks about dates of maturity, interest rates, the outstanding balances, and the payments for the next couple of years. Same goes for the next page, except these are those leases. Same thing, just breaks it down by those leases, and then a little bit of information about it. Page six, this is always kind of an important one. You've got the library. This one, just as a state grant, the libraries receive each year. They've got to meet two tests. The first is either that the mill levy rate goes up year over year, or you assess more dollars in that fund. Both tests, the library qualifies, so according to this budget, you would receive that grant for your library. Page seven, now we're starting into the budget. This is the general fund. As we go through here, I'll probably make references to the worksheets, so you might want to have those handy as we're glancing through. And then, as always, I'd like to remind you, this is your budget. We just take your numbers. We just kind of prepare it based on past history, what you told us, what your plans are for the years. So as we're going through here, if you see any things you have questions on, or any numbers that don't look right, feel free to speak up, so we can make sure to get those changed before the official budget gets published, so that way it accurately reflects what the city's wanting to do, as well as twenty-five. So on the far left, we list kind of those various categories of receipt and expenditures. You've got your prior year actual for twenty-four. All we do is take those numbers straight from the audit. So within that blue book, they're going straight into each of these funds. Projections for twenty-five, those come from these worksheets. We take your information as of May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and we kind of project it out based on twenty-five past history, kind of what's happened year over year for the city, as well as if you know of something different that's going to happen in twenty-five, as well as timing of payments. Sometimes maybe one year, you know, you might pay insurance early, you might pay it late, et cetera. So just always like to highlight that those are your projections based on your information. And then the far right column is our proposed twenty-four, twenty-six. As we go through here, one of the things you're always going to want to focus on is that very first line in each fund, and that's that unencumbered cash balance. Kind of gives you the strength of that fund, tells you, is that fund gaining money, is it losing money, et cetera. So just a quick glance through the general fund. You can see that it started at ninety thousand at the beginning of twenty-four, dropped down to sixty-seven, going into twenty-five, and then it stayed fairly consistent, about sixty-five going into twenty-six. Individual lines here, the first six or seven lines, those are all given to us, or they're based on what was assessed last year for the ad lorm tax, but these are just those amounts given to us by the county. And then we get into sales tax. Looks like so far, projected-wise, you've collected a little bit more through May compared to last year, so I think that's kind of why the projections had it bumped up slightly. Hopefully, it stays that way. And then, as always, I like to say that on these projections, with the receipts, we always try to be a little more conservative, and the expenditures probably may not conservative, but you know, we're going to necessarily budget for you to spend it. That way, you got the authority if you were going to. Next one is franchise taxes, and that stayed pretty consistent year over year. Special assessments, kind of the same thing. We just kind of base that off of the actuals. Licenses and fees, look like it was actually up a little bit for twenty-five so far. You collected seven hundred and fifty-one dollars through May thirty-first, so our projections had it somewhere about twelve hundred dollars, but I backed it off to seven hundred and fifty. It should be seven fifty-one, because that's what's been in there. But I don't know, have you up any rates of licenses or permits or anything during twenty-five, or just had more?
ATV.
Those bumped up? So probably, maybe that twelve hundred dollars, probably not too far off. So I might change that one back to the twelve hundred dollars, and if we did bump up some permits, that way.
Would that drop them back down after the year?
Yeah, it'll go back down.
Okay, so maybe leave the seven fifty for twenty-six then, probably. Is that just like a one-time increase or something?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, fines, that one, we just kind of base it off of what those projections show, about forty-three thousand, and then we keep it the same for twenty-six, just because those are hard to predict. You can't necessarily predict if everybody's going to go breaking the law that year or not. So we just kind of base it off of what's been shown to happen year over year. Reimbursed expense, the previous year is about ten thousand five hundred. For twenty-five, I had it marked as zero, but I'm guessing you're probably going to get your EMC dividend. Probably still will, as I've been, well, I'm guessing that's probably the ten thousand five hundred that you got. So I'll probably add that back in, and that's probably just due to timing that you haven't gotten it yet. Hopefully, that number's more, but that just tends to mean that your cost of insurance is going up too, unfortunately. Donations, we don't ever really expect to receive those, so we kind of budget or project if you've received any up to this point, but otherwise, we just keep it at zero. And then we got your transfers there. A hundred and seventy-five thousand from electric for twenty-four, projected down to a hundred and fifty for twenty-five, and then kept it the same for twenty-six. And then interest, you can see that's increased, kind of what we expected, as rates have stayed high. So we've kept that at kind of the fifty-five hundred dollars. And then your miscellaneous, we just put anything that's happened up to that point. So any kind of questions? Twenty-five, or just had more? Those bumped up, so probably maybe that twelve hundred dollars probably not too far off, but. So I might change that one back to the twelve hundred dollars, and if if we did bump up some permits, that way.
With that dropping back down after the year.
Okay, so maybe leave the seven fifty for twenty-six then probably. Is that just like a one-time increase or something?
Yes.
Okay. Uh fines, uh that one, we just kind of base it off of what those projections show, about forty-three thousand, and then we keep it the same for twenty-six. Just because those are hard to predict, you can't necessarily predict if everybody's gonna go breaking the law that year or not, so. We just kind of base it off of what's been shown to happen year over year. Uh reimbursed expense, uh the previous year is about ten thousand five hundred, um for twenty-five, I had it marked as zero, but. I'm guessing you're probably gonna get your EMC dividend. Probably still will, as I've been, well, I'm guessing that's probably the ten thousand five hundred that you got. So I'll probably add that back in. And that's probably just due to timing that you haven't gotten it yet. Hopefully that number's more, but that just tends to mean that your cost of insurance is going up too unfortunately, so. Uh donations, we don't ever really expect to receive those, so we kind of budget or uh project if you've received any up to this point. But otherwise, we just keep it at zero. And then we got your transfers there, um one hundred seventy-five thousand from electric for twenty-four. Projected down to a hundred and fifty for twenty-five, and then kept it the same for twenty-six. And then interest, uh you can see that's increased, kind of to be expected as rates have stayed high. Uh so we kept that at kind of the fifty-five hundred dollars, and then your miscellaneous, we just put anything that's happened up to that point. Uh so any kind of questions or uh other changes anybody seen on those receipts wise? Dive into the expenditure side. The following page is kind of a summary page. Uh so if you flip to the actual next page, you actually get into more detail about the various departments of the general fund. So starting there with just your general government. Uh it was about two hundred and eight thousand for twenty twenty-four, projected down to about a hundred and ninety-two. And that's probably just gonna fluctuate based on contractual and commodities, looks like are kind of what's changed as far as projecting less. And then as far as twenty-six goes, uh we just had that note that you may pay for G work, so. That's probably gonna fall within that hundred and sixty-seven thousand more than likely, just because you're, you know, you're already paying for it year after year, so it's probably gonna be within that amount. And then I do like to point out that um through these, it is zero-based budgeting. So you are budgeting as if you're gonna spend every single dollar in every fund, obviously you don't ever, you know, suggest that anybody does that. But that's where we plug those numbers per se into those capital outlay lines, as those are kind of your carryover. So as we're going through here, um when you see capital outlay lines, a lot of times that's gonna be kind of that cash carryover. So you can see from a general fund, it is down slightly, uh like I said, it was about sixty-five uh between twenty-five and twenty-six. And then going into twenty-seven, projected to be about twenty-eight thousand. Uh there's a couple of things I was gonna talk to about transfer wise, that maybe we can bump that up a little bit. Um just to help the general fund out, as always, you know, you could uh increase the mill levy as well to help that out as well. Um and with that in mind, there's one more thing that I want to mention about that, uh last year. The revenue neutral rate, um they said that was gonna be the last year that the state paid for the mailers at the county level. Um as far as if you're gonna exceed it, county's gotta send out mailers to every single uh person within your city. I'm telling you, hey, they're gonna exceed it, here's the date of their meeting, if you want to come, et cetera. This year was supposed to be the first year, it's supposed to follow the city to pay for. But they did come out and say that for twenty, this year twenty-five, budget year twenty-six, and then budget year twenty-seven, uh the state is actually gonna carry the bill again. So if you were gonna exceed it, these are maybe the kind of times to consider it, because that extra cost isn't gonna fall on the um city. I always like to say, you know, you don't know what the county might bill you, uh that's up to their discretion, I assume on what they could bill you to. Prepare all those and mail all those out, um so you know, if you're talking about one mill, um which for the instance of Chetopes about thirty-six hundred dollars. Um if you went up one mill, that thirty-six hundred dollars could just be to cover that cost of the mailer, so just something to consider. As far as police goes, um kind of the same thing, expenditures projected for twenty-five are down slightly. And a lot of that just falls into contractual, and I'm just kind of projected. I don't know if there's anything special there that's gonna be coming up, it's been about seventy-six hundred dollars so far through May, I don't know if you have anything. Maybe as far as anything else the rest of the year, but. Probably, I mean, last year was thirty-four, so I don't know, eighteen might seem low on the projected, but. It's hard to tell too on those projections. Uh and then for twenty-six, a couple of things we know for police. For the personal services, um we calculated kind of a pay increase that totaled about eighty-five hundred dollars that Amy sent us. And then we had a couple items there in that commodities, um proof vests, um some software, and then some fire arms, we're also budgeted within that commodities line. Far as fire goes, once again, kind of slight decrease there on projections for twenty-five, um and then. The budget for twenty-six, um kind of stayed similar as far as what was budgeted in previous years, but we did bump up. Um contractual slightly compared to last year's budget, um but overall, nothing really major or change to point out there. First responders, kind of the same thing, stayed pretty consistent there, uh forty-three hundred projected for twenty-five, so kind of that's what was budgeted for twenty-six. Swimming pool, we noted that it's zero for twenty-five and twenty-six, Amy said how operated for those years, so we just kept it at zero. Uh parks, kind of that same thing, down slightly, uh there really isn't any notes on changes or any things you want added, so we just kind of kept it at those. Uh projected amounts, kind of similar to what was budgeted in the previous year. And then same goes for a museum, um I did know that the contractual budgeted was always higher. We budgeted about ninety-seven hundred in the twenty-five budget, so that's what we kept for twenty-six, but I don't know, that seemed kind of high based on. What you've been, what you've been spending there.
So that was for the AC at the museum, that's why that amount was so high.
Okay, so maybe we should drop it down probably a little bit. Do you think four thousand is enough there? I don't know how much you typically.
Yeah.
And it's not like, you know, within the general fund, I always like to remind you that you're bound in total life fund, not necessarily individual line item, so. You're gonna have swings and misses on those, um but you just want to focus on that total number. Municipal court's another one, um we've always budgeted ten thousand. But I don't know if the expenditures, if they're just included up in policing, and they haven't been split out maybe in their own department. I assume that's probably where they've been getting paid out of.
Court clerk. Gets paid out of that municipal.
That's kind of my thinking, is it?
She got raised.
And that's probably what it is, I'm guessing that we budgeted each of four, so I'll probably do some research on that twenty-five amount, see if we just need to move some from up above. Most likely, it's just included up above in another number, so. Uh I mean, if you're, you're obviously still gonna have a court clerk, so we'll just keep it at that ten thousand, if you think that's sufficient, I don't know. Talk about a raise, I don't know, do we need to bump that up at all, or?
I don't think so. Like if we leave it at that.
Um and then street, I'm kind of kept up the same amounts there, uh didn't have, hadn't spent anything in that department so far in twenty-five, so we didn't really project out anything for that. And then the budgeted, I've just kind of mashed up what was budgeted in twenty-five. So any kind of questions or anything on general fund expenditures?
Excuse me, I have a question, because I, I knew you were coming back at this, and where are the salaries paid for, like the. Parks, the streets, that type of thing.
Uh so those are gonna fall in that personal services line.
And we only had in twenty-four sixty-nine hundred dollars for the salaries in the.
Uh been. Yeah, sixty-nine hundred dollars, what was coded to that department, and it's just based on internally how you're splitting those costs up too, so.
Okay, where do the other salaries get placed, that's?
Same thing, uh like there's parks, you have the personal services for five thousand, anything that wouldn't fall in there. Is gonna fall in like um your utility fund, sometimes they're spread between your utility funds, they're spread in a general fund, so. They just kind of spread out, just depends on how the city um essentially decides to allocate those wages more or less. Uh we can dive to the next one, which is the next one of the geo bond and interest fund. Um really nothing major to point out here, um every year we just show those transfers from water and sewer coming into there. Uh to pay for that water and sewer debt, uh so we just transfer in the amounts from water and sewer, uh to cover those payments down below. Um so you can see, it's about a hundred and forty thousand for water each year, and then about a hundred and twenty-five thousand for sewer each year that gets transferred in there. Library fund, um this is kind of another one, it's pretty cut and dry, all those numbers are given to us from the county. Other than what you decided to assess as far as taxes go, and we just keep the mill levy the same as the previous year, so we assess the same number of mills. Um within that fund, um barring any changes, you know, if at the library needed more funds or whatever, if you wanted to allocate more, you always could. I mean, you can always move those mills between the funds. But overall, it looks like that's kind of what you've been sending out about twelve thousand each year, um so that's kind of where it's staying at. Firefighting equipment. Um we just allocate those rural fire contracts there, um you get, received about sixteen six hundred and twenty-four. And then we just got the twelve thousand and twenty-five and twenty-six, I don't know, are those low? Did you get in in the new contract, or did you up that amount at all in twenty-four?
I didn't think we changed any contracts.
Crystal, when you pay the fire. Contracts, has that changed?
We're just keeping that at the twelve thousand. And uh and then the interest on auto fund, we just kind of go based off those estimated amounts again. Um there are projections for expenditures, um just kind of based on what been spent up to that point. And then we have the two thousand for contractual, and this time that plug number's in your commodities line, there are about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Employee benefits, um last year, uh you guys went above R and R, and. Eleven of those seventeen mills went to the employee benefits fund, just kind of give you a frame of reference. Um so essentially, you know, if you wanted to help the general fund out, just internally without going above R and R. I mean, you just kind of reallocate some of those mills essentially, uh from that employee benefits, and as we look through here, you're kind of seeing that. Um what you've allocated there has helped it, uh as you look at those unencumbered balances, you can see for twenty-four, um. When it was lower, it dropped down to thirty-nine, uh but then in twenty-five, when you assess those more mills, it did bump up to fifty-three. And then that carryover going into twenty-seven was up to seventy thousand, so you can see that it did help that fund out quite a bit. Uh but that's just another area that you could consider if you wanted to, um to kind of help out that general fund is. To decrease the mills in the employee benefits, and then whatever you take out of there, you would in turn put into general fund, so. And essentially this fund, all it does is just pay your employee benefits, things like your capers, uh fight attacks, things like that, so. Once again, and all those tax numbers are given to us, and then you got your reimbursed expense there of those internal transfers. And then uh down below, we just kind of estimate a slight increase there as far as personal services go. Uh year over year, they tend to increase, not very often when you see wages go down or benefits go down, so. I just kind of highlight that, just based on kind of those projections. Industrial development, um really nothing to point out here, I'm not letting in any taxes there anymore. Uh so every once in a while, you might collect some delinquent tax, but for the most part, um we just budget as if there's not gonna be anything flowing into there. And then we just budget so you can spend all those funds. Past that, we get to special highway, uh this is another one, where kind of those numbers are given to us. Um that state of Kansas gas tax, uh that's given to us from the state, it's kind of those estimates of what you're gonna get in there. And then you can see it's grown year over year, a lot of times that's the case with special highway, unless you kind of got a big street project going on that you're paying for funds out of there. Twenty-five expenditures overall decreased slightly from uh twenty-four. Looks like commodities, so you might have bought some uh street materials during the year, just projections are a little bit lower in twenty-five, I don't know if you have any big. Street projects at all planned for the rest of twenty-five, I don't think you only had anything that you're telling us about, so. As far as twenty-six goes, uh personal services, we bumped up by two thousand and eighty dollars for that estimated raise. Contractual to twenty thousand is what was budgeted in twenty-five, so we just kept it, it looks like it could be kind of high based on the previous years. Um but as always, you can spend that all within the fund anyway, so just keeping it, that's okay. And then uh commodities, um we've got that kind of plug number there, ninety-four thousand five hundred. And that includes, um you know, if you think about that mini excavator that you talked about, maybe buying or looking into, that was kind of split upon the funds. As well as some culverts during the year, it was kind of on your twenty-six wishes, so that was about eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Um so even if you took that away from there, you'd still be at about seventy-six thousand dollars within that fund, so. Special law enforcement. That one, um these are your bin inspections, and then any donations that you're receiving for law enforcement. Um so it just kind of carries the balance, we estimate the five twenty based on what's projected so far, um and then commodities, we then. I've spent so far, looks like that number needs to change though, because I see that it's. Nineteen thousand, or nineteen hundred four dollars is what's been spent so far through May, so I want to bump that up a little bit. Uh but all that'll do is change that carryover in the far right column down slightly, so. Nothing really major to point out, once again, we just budget safe and spend those funds. Special part, uh this is where you're getting your camera fees, and then we transfer a little bit of sales tax dollars into here. Nothing really major to point out in here, other than on the commodities, this is where you're gonna see, once again, you've got that thirteen-five for that mini X. Um so you know, if you subtract that out, you got about thirty-two thousand dollars carried over, so gonna help in that fund out as far as it goes for. Things that are upcoming. Now we get to those utility funds. Start with water. So from twenty-four to twenty-five, um just highlight that we did bump up water sales, um because we had raised rates. Um it looks like in August to twenty-four, um so twenty-five, you kind of saw a little bit of an increase there. And then year over year, you kind of got estimated for a five percent increase in those rates as well, um so we kind of take that into consideration in your estimates. Uh about five hundred and thirty-five for twenty-five, and then about five hundred and sixty-two for twenty twenty-six. And all these would just kind of go based on estimates, uh it might be a little low, but like I said, it's a receipt, so we try to be a little conservative as far as funds come in there. Interest income kind of stayed pretty similar to the previous year, and then we got those transfers from electric to help out water a little bit. As far as expenditures go, uh personal services increased slightly, uh contractual is just based off what was budgeted in twenty-five at fifty thousand. And then I always like to point out that you did have the hundred and ten that you spent so far in twenty-five for a water line affair. Uh so that's kind of out of the ordinary, as you're looking through here, um kind of hit that twenty-five year. Other than that, a couple other things that I was gonna point out was because of kind of that big project you have going on, um you can see down below. Um that the water fund is estimated to be over budget for twenty-five. Um but we can always do a budget amendment for that to kind of assist that for that kind of unforeseen project, because it sounded like that was kind of out of nowhere when it, when it hit you. Outside of that, really no major changes in the twenty-five numbers outside of anything with projection, where transfers are all the same. Twenty-six goes, um we added sixty-two hundred dollars for your wages in production. Uh and then we had a five percent increase in the general admin. As far as other expenditures, um that capital outlay of fifty thousand there in the production, and that's for that mini X. And then there was some water rises you talked about getting as well. And then I think that's pretty much the notes as far as any kind of changes in the twenty-six budgeted. Carryover wise, um you can see it was at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, so those bump up in rates did help you. Uh you know, increased quite a bit as far as your carryover. That's what I was gonna kind of talk about, you know, something to consider with that low general fund transfer. If you didn't want to bump up your revenue neutral rate, you could always budget for a transfer from water fund. You see, you care to balance of about sixty-eight for twenty-four, uh up to ninety-five, and then down to seventy-six. Then you're at one fifty-eight going into twenty-seven, so even if you uh wanted to go down fifty thousand dollars, you'd still be kind of building that fund up. Uh but then also kind of helping the general fund out, so just something to consider. And I'm not saying you have to, you know, make that transfer, you can always budget for it, um but then as the year goes on, maybe twenty-six isn't gonna be. As expensive or, you know, what's projected or what's budgeted, um but if you did do that, then you'd at least have that authority to make that transfer within those funds. Sewer fund, uh kind of the same thing as water, uh rates will increase, just a little bit smaller, only three percent. Um so those were reflected in those sewer collection lines. Interest income pretty similar, and then uh for twenty-five. Last year, you budgeted seventy-three thousand for a transfer from electric to sewer, and we kept it. At what was matching the actual for twenty-four, so bumped up to a hundred and twenty there. And then we dropped it back down to that twenty-five budget for seventy-three, um as you look at sewer, um you paid off that debt. Or gonna pay it off in twenty-five for that water pollution loan, um so that is gonna help that fund out quite a bit, because you can see, started twenty-four with sixty. Um dropped down to forty-two, and then it rebounds pretty nicely, that's almost seventy-eight thousand, and then one fifty-five going into twenty-seven, so. Um always something to consider, if you want to help electric fund out, you could drop those transfers slightly, because even a twenty-five thousand dollar drop in both years. Is still gonna put sewer at about a hundred and five thousand dollar carryover, so something else to kind of consider there. As far as uh transfers and the expenditures, um really the only changes are, we added two thousand and eighty dollars. Um in personal services once again, and then of that a hundred and fifty-four thousand, roughly thirteen-five is for that mini X paid out of sewer fund. Refuse facility. Kind of the same as the past two, you bumped up rates, um so we kind of reflect that in the collections. Uh penalty is kind of just assessed based on past and kind of what's happened so far, then you got your interest income pretty similar as well. As far as expenditures go, stayed pretty consistent, uh from twenty-four to twenty-five, one sixty to one fifty-seven, I don't know if you trash check the. I don't know if you trash checked, you talked about how it's some issues, I don't know if maybe twenty-five's numbers could be low if you have to do some serious work on it, but maybe if you avoided anything major, then twenty-five's probably fairly close. And then twenty-six, really the only changes are for wages again, four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. And then I did drop the commodities down, I feel I've been budgeting twenty-five thousand there, but you haven't really spent anything kind of for that, so I just dropped it down to twenty, but all it did is just increase your carryover about forty thousand there. And you can see refuse fund is kind of declining slightly, went from ninety-five thousand to seventy-three, down to sixty and then down to forty, so. There is kind of that to consider or look at too. As far as the health of that.
We usually raise that for your.
Three percent.
So hopefully we're undershooting your receipts, maybe you get more people to have trash and things like that, so.
How long is the, the transfer station?
The one thing we don't know about is what the transfer station raises are going to be, honestly.
Okay, so that number, and that probably always fluctuates, I'm sure it is based on.
It doesn't go down.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure. So you got a hundred and fifty-seven projected and then, like I said, there's two hundred and ten there, so you kind of maybe got it built in if those increases, you know, were to bump up, but. And then finally, electric fund, not utility. This one, you can kind of see, it's kind of taking its toll, started at five seventeen and twenty-four, went down to three-ten and twenty-five and then down to two oh eight. A lot of that's just due to electric funds, tends to prop up all your other funds. You can see just in the number of transfers down there in the bottom. So for twenty-four, there were a little bit, increased slightly just to help out general fund. Then we kind of bumped them down in twenty-five and then twenty-six, we had essentially the similar with that seventy-three increase. But like I mentioned, you know, if this was where you wanted to consider dropping those transfers a little bit, it'd be that fifty thousand, it'd also be increased in the electric fund for the decrease in the sewer fund, so. Just something to kind of look at when you're talking about transfers. And as far as expenditures go, we increased wages a little bit, two thousand and eighty for that increase. And then you've got a few wish list items built into your plug with about nineteen thousand dollars. And then we increased that general admin, personal services by six thousand two hundred and four. But outside of that, no real major changes outside of just based off projections. Finally, the non-budgeted funds for the city, those are the next couple pages there. And here we just list out that same information that's in the audit. Just list out the non-budgeted funds and then their activity for twenty twenty-four. Page twenty, that's that notice of budget hearing, this is what's published in the paper. This gives you your twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six tax information, the revenue neutral rate or the rates assessed, as well as those dollars assessed in the total expenditures for each of those funds. So as you glance through there, you can kind of see that for twenty-four it was sixty-eight, and then you bumped up in twenty-five going above that R and R. And then you can see that rate did decrease by about half a mill going into twenty-six, but that's just associated with that increase in assessed valuation. You can see it went from about three point five million to a little over three point six million. So as that goes up, it causes the actual rate to go down, is, you know, properties are worth more, so that assessed valuation is higher, so they're paying more per mill. Really nothing major there outside of just pointing out that, like I said, we're assessing right below that revenue neutral rate, so you wouldn't have to do that. And with that in mind, that following page, that's got that notice to the county there. Prepared as a report, going to receive the R and R, this is what goes to the county on Friday. If you were to go above it, then we just have to fill out that step on the top and get it sent in. So, any kind of questions, comments, changes?
Thank you, you were doing it really, really slow and then the line by line, and that helps a lot of folks that's not done this before.
It's, it's a monster to look at going through.
I would say to the council, that we're not going to have to pay for the mailings, which we thought we might, if we exceed the R and R, we might want to consider going ahead and notifying the clerk that we intend to.
I think we did that the last couple of years.
As always, if you notify that you are going above and then you get to your revenue neutral rate hearing, you can still go below. Just because you say you're going to go up to this number or your proposed number is this, you don't necessarily have to hit that number, you can always go down.
Just kind of a fail-safe first right now.
Yeah.
And with the changeover in, in one of our departments and then building it back up, there's going to be some expenditures in that department. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So just have Amy let us know, so then we can make sure to get any other changes that you guys want here. Or if you want to go above, how much you want to go above, that way we can get it to you.
And I think we probably ought to go ahead and make that motion, if the council wants to exceed the rate, you go ahead and do it now, she has the answers in private.
We'll make the motion to approve, yeah.
Second it.
The raise in the revenue neutral rate possibility.
Do you think they accept the budget bar stuff?
Well, I mean, if you're going to go above it, it's going to change, so. I would wait until we probably get you that change version.
I got a motion by Justin, a second by Chuck, to notify the county clerk that we're going to intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate for twenty-six. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Just let me know how much you guys want to go above. Like I said, each mill's worth thirty-six hundred and nine dollars, so kind of gives you an estimate of for every mill you go up, that's an additional thirty-six hundred and nine dollars you're going to be bringing in.
Thank you.
Yep, you guys have a good evening.
I am here to have a donation for the Labet County Fair premium sale next Friday. For you guys that don't know what that is, we have every between thirteen and fifteen Chautauqua kids that will be showing, show animals at the fair. There's a premium sale, we try to represent Chautauqua's kids, help them out to get a little bit more money for their animals. We all know the price of animals are expensive to maintain for the kids. You know, they're out there really working hard. And it's a good program for the kids, it teaches them showmanship. And so we have formed a group called Chautauqua Merchants. I've been asking our merchants to give a little, we've been very blessed, everybody's helping us to represent Chautauqua one more time and make our kids proud of us, so. I'm just here to ask if you guys can help out on this.
What do we normally do?
Last term we did two hundred.
We'll make the motion to repeat the donation for the, that county fair premium donation.
Second it. Got a motion by Ernie to repeat the two hundred dollar donation for the Labet County Fair. Second by Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I think at this point, we probably need to, to go ahead and establish the number of mills that we intend to raise the rate. If you noticed,
we're at seventy-one point five five.
We were at sixty-eight and sixty-eight point three in twenty twenty-four, seventy-two for twenty-five.
So it's now time to go to seventy-three?
It's going to be seventy-one point five. So seventy-three would be another point and a half, another mill and a half. I really think we're going to need some more money to do.
I think seventy-three would probably be, we're at believe that must be eight to three.
I know with eight-three?
I think the last time I read it.
Making that motion to seventy-three, Ernie?
Sure.
Okay. Got a motion by Ernie to raise the rate by approximately one point five mills to seventy-three. We have a second.
Second.
Got a second by Linda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes for seventy-three. Okay, we're going to go around the horn, Mike, water plant supervisor.
A few months ago, Amy had a few questions about the, what fully was charging us for servicing and stuff for generator repair. So I told her, just send me the bill, I'll look them over and see what we've got. Found a few things, nothing special, but this last round, Amy, did you ever get a chance to total up this last for the repair when it just came to the last time?
No.
They first hit us with a bill of four thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. And so I just heard looking it over and they had charged us stuff that was under warranty, stuff that they should have definitely known was under warranty, the fabric was only getting in there two months, they charged us for that. They charged us for, we have four generators and they charge this mileage for each one. So I called and talked to them about it, and he was more than happy to take everything off and correct it, that yeah, we have to watch these guys a little bit more. They took it down to, the last I checked, was one thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars.
And would that service, would that be, would the fluids change and, or stuff like that, or what?
They have changed it, they've only been here since the first service one other time, he did not change it that time. He changed it at the, after the first service, so. That we don't need to have these done quarterly. We're still under contract until December with them, and at that time, I I would like to see we back it off to maybe annually. The guy I talked to in Joplin, he said that, you know, he's giving me a quote for it. And he said annually for what we need would be plenty.
And I would tend to agree with that, based on the fact that we're not really using them, we're firing them up to make sure they're operational, but I think one or maybe two times that we've actually needed that, the transfer of power. I really appreciate you bird dogging that too, Mike, because, and did we ever get an answer to the question of whether we're under the five-year premium plan or not?
We should be. I mean, it says it's included, and we bought them in twenty-three and it's a five-year plan.
I thought we bought the best of the best warranties.
And I need to call them again, because it even has mileage, it said they pay pay two hundred miles, you know, for mileage, you know, we have to come out for, that's come out for a service. So I would say, yeah, they've been charging us a little, little munch.
Thank you.
I did have another one on this. You probably have in your packet, it's for the generator at the lift station. They have some more repairs that they need to do on it, and they hit us with a bill of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine thirty-eight. And I want to see what you guys wanted to do on that.
What were the repairs?
It's still throwing code, it's getting hot. He done some, he flushed the radiator, changed out the antifreeze, there was another switch that he changed out. Exhaust had a wrap that was melted, so he changed that out, he's done a lot of stuff. But he fired it up, it would run longer, but it's still throwing code, getting hot, shutting down.
So how many hours was on this?
How much did he?
How many hours was on this generator?
Oh. Does not say.
Go ahead.
Give me idea, how many was on that? Lift station? So this is one to lift station, so.
And it runs on propane and it's, it's old, older. And we had, if I recall, we put it in on, when we bought the other three, we added that to the service contract because it didn't even have one.
I think it was put in twenty thirteen.
Okay, so we got a twelve-year-old generator that.
Right.
And a matter of fact, I don't think it was operational when we discovered that it.
Right. I remember that.
He suggested to remove, install new water pump, thermostat and take the radiator out and clean it all, flush it out again. Count the travel time, everything's one thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine thirty-eight cents.
What's our resident mechanic think about that? Mike? I think, he said he had flushed the radiator and that's still, they were still running hot, right?
Yes. It would run longer, it did make a difference, but he's about ten to twelve minutes, it started throwing code and then shut down.
How big is this?
Do you take a thermal gun and shoot the?
Yeah, I was gonna say, has he found a hot spot, is the radiator flowing enough water? I mean, you can stick a damn garden hose and want to know if it's plugged or not, it's pretty simple. I mean.
Take a thermal gun, shoot the radiator all over, I do all the time, tell you where the hot spots are.
I mean, it's real, seriously, just undo the top of the lower hose and see if it's, it's, I mean, it even flowing water or not, I mean, that's that's pretty, and propane is going to run cooler than a regular gas motor. I mean, propane runs, I mean, yeah.
And then again, the sensor that he's tuned into would be faulty.
Yeah.
Especially now.
It could not be running hot, but it could be just faulty sensor.
Justin, I'm, I'm not sure what size it is, I mean, I've got the model number here, but that's all I got.
Would a council person like to take a look at it for us?
You guys would like me to.
Yes.
Seventeen hundred is a lot of money for a home.
I mean, Mike's already caught him in two or three things already, so we need to make sure that.
Yeah, it seems like that their, their gold package warranty is.
How many horse generator is this, like, that's?
I'm truthfully not sure.
I know we bought forty, sixty and eighty KBs for the water plant, I don't remember.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious.
It's a pretty good size.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure it has to be to run, I mean, continuously.
Fifty horsepower pumps. I'd be willing to go down there with you, I've been down there before on this thing, it was leaking. Antifreeze.
Antifreeze.
For a long time.
Well, I mean, if it's twelve years old, I mean, if they, surely they've done all the hoses and stuff on it since he's been there two or three times, I mean, right? S hoses and clamps and stuff, I would think, we've had a soul door part.
Yes. Thermoset, he did not change though, he's going to do that next time.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have to look at it.
Thank you. Is that all, Mike?
The other guy said he's, he's going to give me another quote. To change from the dealership, fabric and, I guess they, and Joplin, from ours, you know, in Chinook, he said it's be kind of, be kind of tricky if we, he said Caterpillar's where you kind of territorial, said if you're in Kansas, oh, that's, you know, I shouldn't, if you're, you know, Missouri, so. He said if we were not happy and we complained to Caterpillar, they want to make sure that we are happy with our service. He said they would, you know, let us out, you know, and change our service technician, but he said it's going to be tough.
Is there a problem crossing state lines from Missouri and?
A little bit, yeah, that's what he said. Caterpillar's way picky about, you know, who's in what area serves in what.
I'll tell you, let me know, keep us informed on what you get as far as your conversations knocked off this bill, and if, if we're still not satisfied, I'll, I'll call over to myself and talk to them and see what we can. Because I saw your, your spreadsheet on your plan financially, that seems like it's a very good deal. Compared to what the travel costs and everything.
Yeah, he said it would bill us, bill us out of Joplin every time, whereas the other one, uh, the guy out of Chinook was on vacation, so they sent a guy out of Topeka and we had to pay mileage come Topeka all the way down, three times.
Yeah. It was like a thousand dollars, I think, travel.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll let you know.
Thank you. City supervisor?
I just have two, two items. Uh, what is, if we can go to summer hours now, just come in like an hour earlier, get off an hour later, just to stay out of the, out of the, you know, the mid-afternoon, a little, a little.
Is there any exceptions to that employee-wise that? Cause I thought maybe one guy had a schedule for ball.
Oh.
Coaching a football team.
Rogan might still have to do a different time break for his, his special career stuff.
But everybody else wants to go to an earlier, you know?
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, you did.
We never really put it across the table, uh, and we have every year.
Right, they should have been.
So when it's really getting hot, I try to push it off until it's, sometimes it's a little earlier in the year of, like, the first year I was here, it was a little earlier than it is.
You should talk at six AM start time.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven to three thirty, cause if we get off too early in the day, then there's still gonna be people that kinda need you. So I don't wanna be off too early when, when you still have to be out and doing things, but.
So that moves you back one hour?
Just move it back one hour, yeah.
Okay, you wanna make a motion on?
I make a motion to start it out earlier.
Okay, I got a motion by Linda, a second by Lindsay. Go ahead and allow the city employees and the public works department to roll their time back to seven AM start time. All in favor? Opposed? That, we're giving, Rogan the exception because he's coaching football lifting or something.
Yeah, he's got way to do the most stuff with kids and, and so he's, he's, his day starts a lot earlier than ours does to begin with.
All opposed? Motion passes. Anything else?
Uh, yes, one more thing. Um, at the lagoons, I, I'm gonna need to get Micah to come back out to the lagoons and hit, hit my edges again, if, if we can do that.
Yeah.
Like, what's he charge us, like, thirty-five an hour? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, not much.
I just looked.
Yeah, that tiger boom.
It takes him like four hours.
Make the motion to request that I could have.
Come out with them in dance.
Where's? He's county, right?
Yes.
And then we'll have to run that across Sandy, right? Or is this off time and he uses his own equipment?
No, we'll run through Sandy.
I think it has to go through Sandy.
Yeah.
So I got a motion by Justin, a second by Ernie Weather.
Yeah.
To get the county to move the lagoons or ask them to. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Crystal, you're up. You tell them.
I've got, I've been doing it now.
Okay. Patty?
I don't know.
City clerk?
I don't have anything.
City attorney? Just the issues that are listed on your own business. Okay. Police chief? Start with the council. Josh?
Uh, we, I guess we need to, we need to talk tomorrow, but I haven't had a chance. Uh, need to trim the trees behind the north side of the bank. Stuff like that. I've had a couple people come and ask me about it, see if we can get it done, it's hitting their cars and stuff.
It's bamboo that's up there?
Yeah, whatever the hell it, I don't know what the hell it is.
Does that bamboo stuff?
Yeah, or whatever it is, yeah. I, I mean, I don't even know what it is, bamboo or what, I don't know what it is, some kind of crazy stuff. And if it's bamboo, that stuff never, it will constantly, I don't know that you can kill it. I don't know if you can kill it.
It's an obnoxious weed.
Yeah, I mean, but I think you have to dig it out of the ground to.
It can never be rid of.
Yeah.
I can kill it.
Around the electric pole there also needs all the weeds cut back, cause if we have to do a man shut down on our generator, we can't get to it for the weeds.
What was it?
Electric pole.
The electric pole?
Generator, okay.
Our generator's hooked to that pole.
I just had a couple people on that bamboo or whatever, that crap's digging out and I just haven't had time to, it's been a busy week to talk to you.
Yeah, I, I can take that down and I can kill it.
Sidewalks needs it too.
Sidewalks?
Yeah, well, you can't find the sidewalks. It's so overgrown. Kids can't walk on the sidewalks going to school, cause you can't find sidewalks. That walks straight to the good school there.
I know that area is a problem. It always has been in my tenure. When we do address it, we get minimal cooperation.
From the person that owns.
Yeah. And that person is, is beating us.
What's the security risk of the baby? You guys really wanna know about it. I mean, people can hide that stuff. I'm kidding that my employees, if you really wanna get down to it.
If it were up to me, we would just condemn the property and demolish it.
I like that.
And there's even a bunch of, I call it a zoo in there, because the door opens, the cats run crazy. Problem is, we're getting beat to the punch. Property hasn't been transferred to another person who's, so far we haven't been able to get a hold of.
You mean contact, the person that owns it now, contact them?
Yeah, it got transferred.
You mean that three year house, like the church, like the school? No.
That, that's been taken care of.
Okay.
Defense. The guys got that knocked down.
Oh.
The place behind, to the north of the bank that has the fence around.
Yeah.
Alright.
Is no longer under that person's name. Uh, but it's a family member evidently.
Does that person exist?
I don't know. I, there's about four or five properties that have been transferred to that name. It, it is a little odd, in my opinion. Um, however, we have attempted to work with the post office to find out about mailbox numbers and associations. And I guess federal law, they can't really give us anything, uh, so it is a loophole. Additionally, Amy and I, uh, went to the county commissioners meeting yesterday and talked about that very subject from a macro city point of view, about all the dilapidated properties that we have. The mowing problem that it causes us and, you know, the resulting drug problem that those kind of properties also create. And we are getting promised about a sheriff's sale this, this fall. It has been seven years of promises, but we were just trying to get something in there, minutes where the public can see that Chautauqua has a problem with all the back taxes not being paid and properties that are overgrown and we don't, we can't mow the whole town. So we'll see what comes out of that. Additionally, I addressed the, uh, the wood debris on the bridge pylons to them. It is a KOD issue, but I got a hold, uh, one of the members gave me a, a contact with KOD. So I called him yesterday. We're gonna get somewhere on that. He promises me, it's a contract issue for them though. So it's a slow process. But we know the woods pile up and we're looking at it.
When all those properties go up for tax sale, you go up there and buy one and we've been mowing a piece of property we've been having taxes to for years. And they sell it for a hundred dollars. We're just out the money.
Technically you're not, but if they come to us, we generally wave our back, lean on, on whatever, just to get it off back on the, on the threshold. So we're not making any money. It's costing us and that's why I'd rather nip it in the bud in the beginning where we're not. But there are so many properties in Chautauqua, believe it or not, on the deed, they're deceased. And their heirs have inherited this property and never filed the deed, so the name doesn't change, but somebody is paying the back taxes on it every year. But that's really not our, we're not able to get that info, cause that's who we go to. And this is where you get these places like out here on the west end that we had a, uh, condemnation resolution on that, that we haven't gone any further with, but we're looking into it, folks. That's what I'll tell you. And working it hard.
May I ask, um, did the city mow one fourteen North Fourth?
Detroit, where the truck?
Yeah.
That's my understanding. Is that correct? That was one of my, yeah, we went in.
Mike wanted to say, yeah, the dog.
I'm just glad you.
We can't eat that.
Well, it's a traffic.
I wonder, you know, some vibes of traffic having a lot of in the school.
No, they must be easier.
Well, it got so bad you couldn't see if you had a stop sign, you couldn't.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Tony Wood, did you have some?
Um, just keep in mind, when it goes up for sheriff's sale, they only go back a year on special assessments. They go back the full year and then the partial. So anything that was before that, we have to eat.
It's lost. Yep. And I, and I did mention that year because our.
Remember you said.
No, I know. We're exactly, our yards around town and doing stuff like that and we're getting nothing out of it.
And just also keep in mind that we did have an instance where a person bought a bunch of, uh, properties that sells tax, a sales tax, uh, sale and they did not check with us. When we send up a, a ordinance to do those special assessments, if it's after the time that they, uh, put the, uh, amounts on the, the taxes, if we send up a special assessment after that date, then they don't put it on there until the next tax day.
I think you said that was October.
Yeah. So, I mean, we had a lot of people that was unhappy because they still owe additional special assessments that they didn't know at the sales tax.
I remember that. Okay, uh, moving on. Who are we? Linda?
Um, yeah, I was supposed to ask, um, if we would be interested in selling the slide, uh, the pool slide to the city of Edna.
I, I, I don't know. The rec bought half of that, so.
And you, yeah, and we, I mean, if they did, you'd get your half back or whatever, but they just wanted to know if you'd be interested in selling it. I said I'd ask.
To where?
Um, Roxy, Roxy Vale's the one that asked me about it, so I'm not sure who it's for. Um, anyways, her husband's a mayor over there.
Yeah, I know Sam.
Yeah.
Did they make it off?
So I don't know who it's for to be honest, but she said, yeah, so.
Sixty-four hundred dollars.
Okay.
We're gonna need it someday.
Huh?
We're gonna need it.
Yeah, but I wouldn't sell it. I understand it was sixty-four hundred dollars.
It's same, we're gonna need it someday.
Yeah.
In your backyard. When you build your pool.
What's gonna be on the spot?
We got a fund. How, how much have we got in our fund?
We got a slide for it at least.
Well, that'll, that'll.
I mean, have we had some donations, can you know?
Yeah.
So that's what it was. That's what it was.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was.
We haven't had a meeting for them to approve this flyer, but we do have a flyer.
Not that much yet.
Okay. Tabled.
A rich person's gonna come and check up there. That's all I ask.
Church pastor, true.
Uh, Mike answered my questions about the generators and the, uh, look on that. Um, and Amy, I think you put in the stuff for the bunker year.
I'm gonna have, yes, that was kind of, and you told me eight thousand.
Yeah, we questioned, uh, budget for two sets of bunker year this year. Or in new, so, and it comes to about eight thousand will be safe. I think it's about thirty-five hundred dollars per set. That's it.
Chuck?
I wonder if we can make it a priority to get our parks mowed before we go mowing any of the properties that we don't pay for. And people, I've already been called several times. You know, that park's not been moved down there to Veterans Park since they promoted, uh, two weeks before, or two days before the fourth. I know they've been using excuse that it's been moist and stuff, but your yard, I drove around town and eighty percent of the yards look really nice and our city yards look bad. The parks are overgrown again and that city park could really get.
So we have neighbors that call and complain that the grass is this tall and that's to the good lady that, so that's why we started getting on those properties, correct?
We also have, so when they give me the list, we can last couple of days, I have to mail out how much it costs to mow. They have thirty days to pay that before I can even, we can even put it at the next council meeting to approve to send it to special assessments.
Right, it's a process.
I'm just saying, people that drive through town and come to this town, they're not gonna drive down four blocks off Main and say, look at that piece of property there, they're seeing our parks.
Yes, I can move it again.
Yeah.
My sign was blown.
Everybody has, you know.
Say it again, Linda.
I said, I thought the one, like, when you're coming into Chautauqua, you mean?
The East River?
I thought it was done the other day.
East River.
But maybe it wasn't.
It looked good today when I went by.
So.
So how often are you thinking that we need to mow the park, the veterans park? I mean, what's your?
When it's needed, it's needed. I drove down there. If, if, I mean, that stuff's, it may not look like you're driving by thirty mile an hour, thirty-five, but when you slow down and drive around, then for that grass to get deep.
Roger O'Neil said he always mowed it within four to five days. That way it didn't pile up. And you guys, you gotta think about little kids running out there. The taller it gets, the more mosquitoes we have. And sugars.
Well, it was moved on July the second. What do you think the next best time to mow it is?
Miles, let's, let's make the Veterans Park a priority for y'all. Uh, I.
Been two weeks?
I'm not gonna argue how long it's been. I have no clue, but if you're not happy with it, then that is a horrible point.
I'm not the one. I just catch it. People call, like, you know, I'm on that park steal, so they call and complain and they stop by and complain and they.
You're on that committee and we'll tell them the word for it. Uh, anything else?
Got a couple people there.
Oh, go ahead.
I live in the Hornet Edition and the homeowners out there, I know. My property, we have been mowing for years, way past my boundary line. Just so my house, my property looks good. And you, you talk about the, uh, the parks, I agree with that. But that out there in the Hornet Edition has been neglected terribly. And I know the homeowners on west of us, they have mowed way past their properties too. And I know the homeowners on west of us, they have mowed way past their properties too. And it looks bad.
Well, the city, the city needs to start paying that over there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's piled up after they cut it, mowed it, it's piled up that high.
Is it a low area, Ronny?
No, it's higher than what we, it's, yeah, it's higher out in there. I don't know why they don't lease it out to somebody to hang. Would, it'd look a lot better.
We actually, uh.
I mean.
We actually have.
Go up there and they, they cut it, and I'm not kidding, the grass is just slopped up.
Okay. First time I've really been told that it's that bad, but we, uh, been discussing.
It's been like eighteen inches tall before they cut and mowed.
So we sent the city a letter about twelve inch rule.
Yeah.
About ready to pay.
But to keep our properties looking halfway decent out there, and we all take care of our properties, we had to mow way past several feet, probably twenty feet past to the east, my mow man does, just to make my place look good. And I know, um, the people on the corner west, they did the same thing going west. And I think Brian Wirex also mows past his. And, you know, this has been going on for years. I'm paying my mow man to mow city property.
Should we sell it to the Sawmill guy that wants it?
The Sawmill guy? I don't know anything about that.
He's lying on the north side. They're, they're talking about the unsold lots in here in the Hornet Edition. Yeah, the new, the new addition.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean the one that we wouldn't sell, you'd have built a garage on?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Miles, we need to add that to a pile?
Well, and then across the street too, it's, and I realize we've had a lot of rain. But my property just mowed three times for that all.
Yeah. Well, if we just brush hog that across the street.
That's what we bought that about a four.
Instead of mowing it, instead of mowing it, brush hog, instead of six inches and brush hog, instead of mowing it.
Go ahead, Miles. You got something to say?
Uh, maybe I need some, some better parameters on that area, because like, I had two guys out there today mowing what we think we're supposed to mow. So if we're not hitting all the areas that we need to hit, then I need to know where else I need to go.
I think we're talking empty lots on the south side of, of the Hornet Edition, am I correct?
Which I.
On the north side.
And the north side too.
I bought on Elm Street. I got four lots over there that's, Elm Street's taken care of a lot there.
Uh, one of the guys that was temporary, I think last year, maybe the year before, but mowed, he didn't even know that the property between Wirex and the, I don't know the people on the corner, their name. He didn't even know those were city properties.
There've been people stopped by our place and wanna know who to contact, buy some lawns to go and do all of it.
Big sign.
I don't think the city's trying hard enough to get rid of.
Big sign out front.
We need to speak to them.
Go ahead, sir.
I have a question. I filled out a complaint about a month and a half ago and hadn't heard anything about it. I even sent pictures.
Yes, and our chief, he has answers for you.
All the pictures.
I mean, drive by, by there and smell it. It's pretty bad.
He's addressed.
I had exterminators over four hundred dollars, just because all the damn bugs and crap them, all those guts and stuff.
We saw your complaint, sir, but we haven't had a meeting for a month, and we're just now, it's on our agenda tonight.
I, I sent you guys pictures and everything.
Yes.
And instead of three buckets of each gut, there's five now. And then there's a big black tip, and my neighbor said that stuff's been there for five years. I've been there for two years. And it gagged me when I moved the yard. And then bugged and trashed, and the dogs get it, the stray dog. It's a mess.
Yeah, they're talking, boy, we got a lot of cats around our place. I don't know where it come.
We're gonna get, I don't know.
That's right.
That's right, okay. Moving on. Let's roll.
We got no mouths, so.
Okay.
All right, that's enough, please. Get back to what, uh, we were talking about, the pool. We need to go ahead and Shane has looked at this flyer. We'll pass it to the council. You should have seen.
It's like Saturday, you're packing a few bags.
So they're packing.
It's not one prior.
Yeah.
It, uh, it's gonna help us get some donations out of the bank accounts for the pool that, um.
The account is up. We just advertised, so we're good with the flyer. Nobody had any changes.
I'll need to see that.
Sorry.
Can you tell us what this is concerning about the pool, you said?
It's a, we set up a fund account to people, so people could donate, try to save our pool or, or build a, uh, plan. I'm good with it. Okay, somebody give me a motion so we can advertise this.
Motion. Say advertise.
Motion buyer, any sec. I just, J, uh, Josh, go ahead.
So yeah.
Flyer for the bank.
For previous, then, if we're gonna do that, tell Roxanne.
That's fine. That's fine. I'll tell her.
Okay, all in favor? Post. Motion passed.
If somebody asks for a tax receipt for their taxes on them donations, are, is it okay if we give one out for them, for the city? Or do you want them to come out to the city to get that receipt? How do you wanna handle that?
Why is that shy? I didn't hear the question. Sorry, wasn't, maybe you didn't.
Okay, if someone comes into the bank and wants to give a sizable donation, say five hundred dollars or more, is it okay if we give a receipt saying that this is for this small pool donation? Or should we send them to the city for that receipt?
If you wanna keep the records, that's fine. Give them the receipt.
Yes, and you guys are getting the records, correct? So it would be good if they did the receipt.
It'd be simple.
Thank you.
Okay. Just seeing what somebody get IRS audited and, you didn't have permission.
Good thought.
Yeah, I mean, just wanna have a basis for that. Five hundred thousand dollar donation again.
Tax write-off for a man. That'd be awesome.
Well, people want those receipts for their taxes.
I would too. Chuck, did you have anything else? Nope. Okay. Uh, I have seen a list of the properties that the city is responsible to mow. Uh, it's not really by address, it's just some general directions. If you haven't seen that, Miles, come see me after a meeting and we'll look at it. Betsy, do you have anything else? Sorry, not prepared.
No.
Pardon? Okay. All right, Crystal, I guess we'll have TV time. Just, uh, wanna show a few pictures of things that's been going on, and I take pictures when I'm around things. Probably start with the July fourth, I would think. I only took two pictures, because I was busy, but this is the, uh, the police department's train that, uh, our new employees, our new officers, uh, drove and, and chappelled on the kids in the park. I think it was a pretty good hit.
Thank you.
Uh, also, big thanks out to, to Debbie in the chamber, all the people that put in so many hours and sweated. Chuck, I know he was involved deeply on the weed eating, and I don't really wanna go by names, but there were a lot of people that did a lot of things, and, uh, I considered July fourth a huge success, and, uh, the parks looked great at that point, so.
So the fire was creating a lot of unusual ones that weren't different than before.
As chamber president, we want to thank all the city people. For, while all of his departments are getting the trash cans and everything out, it was a new experience for everybody this year. And as chamber, we deeply appreciate the city for, whether you were cutting fish or washing dishes or cutting onions, we appreciate you.
Yeah, she said we'd be there till midnight cleaning up, and thirty minutes later, we were gone. There was no trash. Everybody picked their trash, put it in the cans and.
Built into cooking. Okay, and this is, this is the pictures I showed the commissioners yesterday of, of the pileup of, on the bridge pileups. Quite impressive, if I do say so myself.
Yes.
Maybe as much as I've ever seen there, but then again, I haven't. Okay, for the electric interested folks, these are what we call our closers, and attached to the side of those, uh, control panels that you hear us talk about. The, uh, little city of Mount Ridge, Kansas, which is up by McPherson, close to it. Uh, Chuck volunteered to run up there at Old Dark Thirty one morning in his truck, and they donated these two to our cause. Uh, this is the control panel that blew up, or one like it. And I'm, the next picture will show you what the new one looks like, so you can see the difference in technology. Uh, night and day, maybe that's why we've had a little bit of success with electricity here recently. I'll also say that, uh, we have sent, ours, have we sent it, our letter?
Yes.
Okay, we sent a certified letter to Liberty Utilities to try to get reimbursement on that control panel. It was almost seventy-four hundred dollars. Uh, we believe that they caused the problem the night they shut down power and moved the equipment from one pole to another, which we had city equipment on that same pole, and they, they moved it with us, so we're gonna try to get restitution. Probably won't have much luck, being that they got better lawyers and, and more money to spend than, than we probably could afford, but I thought it just proved to try and get some money back on it. Uh, there's a series of, probably four, four pictures here. My point is, three different locations, we lost power, and tree limbs fell on power lines. It wasn't a failure of our equipment. If you notice around, and there's the broken, uh, cross arm that one limb caused. And that was the one that caused us about seven hours of downtime. Point being, though, if, if a tree is on your property and it causes, in a storm, to knock out everybody else that's on that circuit's property, I wish they would go to you as a homeowner and complain, because this is not the city's fault. There's one tree in particular that's in an abandoned house, that there is a dead tree in the yard that could just, just as well have caused the problem. Can you circle that back, Crystal, to the, uh, the one down on South Fourth? Well, they're going dead there too, but. Down here. This is an abandoned house, apparently. And that dead tree is not the one that hit the line, but can you see how close it is to, to going over? This is what I'm asking citizens, their own homes and own properties, to take care of your own trees. Because when you don't, and it goes down on the line, it causes everybody on that circuit to lose their power too.
How far off that road is our responsibility?
Twenty feet, is it not, Miles? From center line?
Twenty-six. Twenty to forty, depending on the road, on the map. That particular one, that tree was right next to the house, so it's way past center line, it's way past our date, and it fell over, you can see part of it, as when I cut it off of there, it, it had fallen from the house all the way onto that line. And it had separated two, two of the, uh, the very top. You've got the primary lines, there's three of them, three-phase system running there, and it broke two of those and left one towards the east, I think it was, still intact, and that was the only thing holding the whole thing up. And when I cut it off, off of there, there was so much tension on it, it was, it was crazy. I couldn't even, I couldn't even push it off.
So, yeah, point is, the tree's dead, and you know, homeowner needs to take care of it, but.
The wind took it down a little bit.
It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be up to the city to have to send you a letter to take care of a tree on your property. It's an obvious problem. And we deal with this on many properties. So that's why I'm just asking citizens to take care of their own trees.
Initially, it wasn't even near the, near the line. It was just so tall that when it didn't finally go over, it hit everything.
When you say twenty to forty feet, where are you measuring?
Center line. From the center of the street.
Center of the street.
So you go twenty feet from the center of the street, from one side or the other, or forty feet, depending on.
A lot of the city streets are mapped in there on the map, are eighty feet wide.
Eighty, so it'd be forty feet.
Which makes no sense, because the streets aren't that wide, but that's what's plotted on the map.
What we generally go by is the sidewalk. If it's on the homeowner's side of the sidewalk, it's their tree. And if it's not, that's the city's responsibility, but anyway. Just trying to impress.
Very similar. I, I can't remember if it's, maybe that was twenty foot, maybe the, the street is the, the eighty, and the alleys are the forty.
Alleys are sixteen.
Alleys are sixteen.
So it's a big, I think one is the highway is eighty.
So can you put a special assessment on that property for, to have that tree down?
Well, we can do a lot of things, but it'd be a lot easier if the homeowner would just take care of it.
To absorb some of our cost.
Problem likes you're saying, the people inherit its property, and they live out of it. You know, now, and they don't even care about it.
This is why we're circling back to the sheriff's sale.
Well, this one was bought from a company that's looking for.
Really inheriting.
Out by some lines.
The face is secondary. The truth affect on the secondary going into that. I would say that that would be a lesser.
Okay, we need to move on, folks. I just, I didn't mean to cause it. I just trying to make a point that the last three power outages, these are the reasons why. Okay, we're gonna go on to old business, got office of the clear restitution. Shane?
It was all drafted, fully with discovery. I thought that she would have it done for me today, and be, so typically, I'm gonna review it and maybe the language changed a little bit. It's about to be filed.
Are there any problems with contracts, issues, anything?
My reading of, of the contract she signed with us, I don't see any problem. You know, you can always make arguments about what the language means. In reality, I don't see any problems. I doubt whether she'll hire counsel to defend it, but I don't know. Let's see.
Well, if I'm, if I remember correctly, this contract was, was based off something that Pitt Parsons PD provided, so. It should be.
It requires for her to, to pay reimbursement expenses unless she was terminated under certain condition. And she was not. She voluntarily stopped moving.
Right. Okay.
And then she went past a year before she became an officer again. So we had no course, we had state statutes that exist to do that, so we had to rely on laws. And we're, we're in, within plenty of time. It's a writ of documents of five-year statute limitations, and we're, we're in good shape.
That's what I wanted to hear, five-year statute, like that. Our closer panel, we've already discussed.
The new control panel was shipped out Friday.
The second one?
Yes.
Thanks. How many of the closures are we already going down?
Three, I think.
Two plus. Go ahead, Bob.
I'm, I'm not even sure. I think we're on three.
Isn't it two of the old ones and one new one? I think so.
It could be, um, when Cole was telling me about this, I don't really understand exactly what he's, what he's telling me. I know that Liberty is backing us up.
Yeah, part of me jumped off of Liberty, didn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one, residential south.
Okay. We're still, in my opinion, we're still limping along. We're not a hundred percent. Now, the parts that the city donated and Chuck picked up, we don't know for sure if they're good. They were good when they took them out.
That's what I was, I was gonna ask. Do we know that they're even?
Okay, I don't think so, is that correct?
So it, it's a blind faith if we need another one?
That's my opinion.
Yeah, they were functioning when they, when they switched over because it's same day they got, they built the new substation. They just transferred the lines from there.
I got you, I got you.
Now, that one's a real antique. We think we got antiques. That first one, that big one has two boxes with it. It's even older than the stuff we had. But the other ones are newer, so. And he said that they were functioning when he, when they disassembled everything, so.
We get ahead a little bit. We may send them to Solomon and just.
That's their way to have them test. I mean, I mean, I know something can work one day and then the next, I mean, that's the nature of the deal, but.
Some things go bad, so still.
Yeah.
Okay, sewer update. We need, well, pass the water.
Because, yes, we didn't have the meeting the first.
Just so you know, the smoke testing, we've scheduled that for the end of this month, July twenty-eighth through the thirty-first, so if you see smoke in your yard, you got a problem.
I will post the flyer tomorrow on Facebook page.
That is subject to change as we know, depending on weather. Junk vehicle list update.
We've got some new ones that I brought to Crystal. We've got several that were attempt to serve two times, a couple that have been attempted to serve three times. After three, I think we need to start just sending a letter.
Okay, I've, I've asked Jason today to start, since he's code enforcement officer, to have him, since he's got a, usually has a ride-along training, to start putting some more emphasis on junk vehicles and dilapidated houses. Everybody's got their eyeballs out. Let the city know if there's a problem that you see and we'll see if it's on the list. I'm constantly driving around looking. Seems like places get up there every day, but help us out. Uh, city animal tag ordinance. Are we ready to pass that?
I don't have it prepared yet. I have some questions for the city. You haven't had a meeting in a month. What you want modified is section one, twenty dash one-twenty B, charging the registration fee, upping it to five dollars, correct?
From one dollar to five?
Right, and then everything else you want to remain regarding deer, male dogs, et cetera. All that goes out.
That's going out. Remember, we're not doing any. It's just five dollars.
Correct. Now, that includes the potential that we'd have to repeal some other sections of the ordinance. Under articles for dogs, section two dash two oh one, paragraph four, five and subsection B, I think will need to be removed as part of the order. And that is that the treasurer shall collect annual interest fee of a dollar for reaching neutering, et cetera. The next section, the administration of the January one fifty-seven thirty-one, fees will be payable before March first. And then lastly, registration fees as enumerated may be prorated for new acquired dogs. I understand you want just to be rid of all, that's right?
Yes.
Okay, so then I want to be clear on, it won't be a problem. I'll, I'll do the ordinance that modifies one and basically eliminates those. I think you decided to do it. I just want to make sure you understood completely.
In a nutshell, we're gonna get rid of the requirement for spam neutering because that keeps people from getting their dogs vaccinated for rabies. We did hold a, a vaccine clinic on the fence. There were nineteen animals vaccinated. So, David, we'll take your hundred dollar donation anytime.
I know they did. I must have been there.
You're on a ship somewhere in.
Alaska.
So that one, I consider that a success and I'd like to do that again in future. Uh, and thanks to Tyler Dillon for doing that for us. He's got a lot on his plate right now, but. Water tap fee ordinance. We talked about this at prior meeting.
Yes, our unapproved maintenance discussions, they'll be hearing water tap fee and associated monthly minimum charge when the tap's not in use. Motion to sec to draft ordinance requiring individuals requesting new water tap and meter to cover the full cost of installation. So this would need to be modified where the city's not going to do it whatsoever and that it would be at the expense of the customer. The question becomes, and this wasn't discussed in a, but go to mayor about it.
Yeah.
All the water means are, are within our, our reasons. Sometimes they're close to a per. Damage can be done by someone installing a meter, okay? So do you want language in there to the effect that the homeowner, whomever the customer wants to have done, should, will be responsible to hire someone to do it, but do you want that someone to be a licensed bonded contractor with like a hundred thousand dollar insurance to cover any damage to city property? That was my concern.
That would be an absolute.
Okay, that wasn't, we didn't discuss that last time and that's what, I had it done, but we didn't have, couldn't get a meeting for a month, so.
Yeah.
I just want to try and protect us from any damage.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I think most of your cities, you gotta be licensed and bonded to do any kind of thing anyways.
And they have to have it on file.
Yes, and.
Well, I think we need to include in, in your town.
Yeah, that's.
I think we need to approve those, that, that information has to be provided by the contractor and or the consumer to the city prior to five days of installation.
Right.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Chad, did you have something that you wanted to say about that or are you just looking at your funny?
Me?
Yeah.
The state of Kansas doesn't require plumbing, heating and air or electrical have license and that federally. You have to have a license for heating and air.
Just the towns do it? Just the towns?
Yeah, like I have a heating and air license and electrical license in, out of Oklahoma.
We're not talking about a license bill here, but we're just.
Right, bonded.
Yeah.
Insurers.
Yeah, insured bonded contractor with a minimum hundred thousand, I believe.
Yeah.
Damage is for our roots.
Tommy?
I think you're gonna be re, you know, you're gonna have, most of your local people are not gonna be able to do that because, I mean, I, I discussed this with Zach today. He's not licensed and he's not bonded. Now, he does have insurance, but, you know, and I know he does quite a bit of work for individuals here. So, I mean, I'd be kinda leery about putting that kind of language in your ordinance because that's gonna exempt a lot of your local contractors.
Do you know what his liability insurance dollar figure is?
Um, I'd have to, I got one the other day. I think it's, it, it's over a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I can change it just to the, they must have a minimal liability insurance.
So the homeowner's gonna have to pay for the tap, put the tap at nine hundred dollars a month?
They're paying for the whole thing.
I agree, many dollars worth of insurance up there. Yeah, that's what I agree with.
What we have to hire out? We're being the middleman on something that we have no business really. It's just our proper city is. If a homeowner needs a new connection, that's gonna be on them, but.
What we were discussing, the language was draft of an ordinance requiring individuals requesting new water tap and meter to cover a full cost of installation. And I would presume that means the tap as well.
Yes, we don't, we don't want them doing the tap. They, yeah, we don't, we don't need a bunch of individuals out there digging a hole and then you're trying to tap into our water.
Right.
That's a disaster.
Costs more money in the long.
We'll say excluding the, the tap and then I think.
And then what happens if something happens at that tap they're installing? Because we don't charge for the meter out to the house. So the meter back to the tap is a problem later on, then they're gonna go back and say, well, we're gonna charge you for, you get a water leak in it and lose ten thousand gallons of water.
The current, under this, the current, the city is to make connections, okay? Under section fifteen, two oh five, city to make connections, all taps should be given, street excavations made corporate. Installed in a meter box, service pipe and is to be connected by a city employee. So we're not changing that. We're just gonna make customers responsible for the installation.
Yeah, yeah. I agree.
And what's the tapping fee going to be for the city?
The other side of that coin too is Bennett told us that they, up to a year, they would come back and do the taps.
That's on sewer. That's the sewer.
But digging is digging.
Okay, yeah, our, this is the connection fee is seventy-five dollars.
See, we can't.
No.
And the meter sets their dormant.
Yeah, that's, that was that one issue I know.
Right.
What that one is about.
That, that was our intent, was either pull the meter or get a monthly fee.
And I need to be clear on what it is you exactly want me to draft.
I'd ask Zach about what it costs to put one in instead of speed.
We know what that number is.
Yeah, we do.
Eight, well, is it eight?
And that's what we ought to charge to put a tap in for a while.
Whatever, but whatever the contractor, that price may change, I'd hate to put a dollar figure in an ordinance.
Well, that's gonna be, that, that amount will be available by the constant, like, just the question whether you want the city to still do the tap, what you do and what's the fee, what you want to charge.
Speaker. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of governance to this, this what we're talking about. So like supposedly I'm building a new house over here and, and I'm gonna have to have water, right? So the normal come out and hook me in a water meter. Right, and then I hook onto it or have my plumber hook onto it and bring it to my house. You know, nowhere in the history of my knowledge if I ever hired a contractor to tap into a city municipal, so.
It's an installation, new service.
I, I've never, and.
The problem arose when we really don't have anybody qualified to do that work on city staff. So we were having Zach do it.
How do you know specifically what you want?
But I don't know that we can do it for that cost.
We can't.
Tommy, lift the equipment, haul it out there, dig the hole, do it, get contracted out?
Well, you, 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 you've got to provide the meter whether or not it costs the city because we don't have anybody qualified to go out there and dig a hole.
We don't sell.
Or trench a line.
Meter is provided, we can charge for usage.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of us amping our water bill. That's a service. I mean, they should, like, we gotta give them.
That's why you have, that's why you have, that's why you have those fees on, on your bill.
Yeah.
But to, if we don't have somebody qualified to tap the main, run it over, put the meter there and then you go on this side of the meter, it's both for electrical and water and sewer, so.
A monthly charge needs to be charged for those that were putting in for no reason. They're just sit there to water their cattle if it has to be a draw.
But how do you know if it's no reason out when, when you put it in?
The reason why is because when they read the meter, it never changes.
That's right, it's not being.
Yeah, and there's no water flow.
So there should be, so what we're talking about is we're talking about a non-use charge. So if, so for non-use charge, then you'll have to assess a charge for non-use.
Yeah.
See what I'm saying?
There should be a minimum charge.
For non-use.
If we, yeah, if we put a tap in, they're gonna.
Probably just pull the meter.
Yeah, yeah.
We gotta install them.
You've gotta give me utilities.
Absolutely. That's just part of being a township.
Yeah.
Well, rural water, this reason, they charge a lot of money for just becoming a tap.
That's a different story. You got a fifteen hundred dollar, two thousand dollar tap fee. That's because they have to run a quarter mile line to you. But they still do it.
Right, yeah.
So.
You need to have a tap fee though, too.
Well, you have a service charge on your meter that you pay every month that you're using your electric as a line fee. You remember even.
All the fees on the back of your deal, that's what that's for. Maintenance and.
But if you're putting a, a meter in just in case you need to fill, your pond goes dry and you need to fill a trough and you use that once in five years.
You need a non-service fee for that meter sitting in there just for them to use it.
There should be some kind of wording. If, if they got a meter or tap in, you just play, it's, that's part of the service fee. Yes.
If the meter's there.
You're paying.
Yeah, if the meter's.
Because if someone has to come by and read it, that's a service fee.
You're right, Shane. No, this is gonna have to have some more discussion.
Definitely, because that's why I didn't do anything.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say I have an electric on at a business and I never have the electric on and I pay a hundred bucks.
Yeah, yeah, same way the water, same way the water meter.
I don't know exactly what they want.
I pay twenty-six dollars a meter, never mind.
That's right. That's right. Yeah.
I was just gonna say, my meter was unread years and years and years ago. And when they overread it, I was told that I had to pay the minimum amount, so I thought there was already that amount on there. Whether you use it or not, there, you pay a month on that.
For the first thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So until it caught up, then that was the.
Right, that's not what we're really talking about.
Okay, I think you need to form, I'm just, it's too good.
Yeah.
Perhaps you form a committee to study it, figure it out, find out exactly what you want to do and how you want to change and then I'll draft.
Well, if we pull your meter, your electric meter, you're not paying anything anymore. So, because there's nothing there to read.
Right.
So if you put a water meter in, which is one sitting out there we're talking about, stuck in for feeding cattle, then it's, it's, it's out there. The meter's not, it's in the can, so it needs to be charged for every month.
Yeah, I mean, we go by and check and see if they used it. I mean, we go by and check, see if they used it, right?
She does, I, we, we did, I can.
So pull the meter out if you didn't want, if you didn't want it in the feed every month, pull the meter out and then, then that's a charge. Say, well, we charged to put the meter in, we charged to take the meter out. If you want the meter back next month, we'll charge to put the meter in, you put water in it again.
Okay, we're gonna assign that to the water committee to hash that out with Shane.
As being specific, we're gonna take.
And once you're done, I'm gonna put in that more question. You are.
I can do that.
I am.
There you go.
We can do that.
Josh and Ernie are gonna.
Josh and Ernie.
Okay.
You got it, you're paying the fee.
We got this.
Employee salary range discussion.
Bennett, table that one.
Want to go?
Let's table it because I can't even recall that part. It's been too long. Unless, Patty, do you remember what that was about?
What, employee salary range discussion? Went down to Saline?
Going to Saline instead of hourly wage?
I think that's what goes.
Right, and I discussed that with Jason again today and there's a whole new circle of things that he's wanting to come up, just to give you guys enough, kind of an idea. He's wanting to come off the twenty-eight day, hundred and seventy-one hour cycle and go hourly just like everybody else. Which would help Patty in, in the calculations for pay, but that would be something that we'll put across the council and we decide the whole picture. So we're not ready to talk. We'll just table it. Okay, proposed sick pay. I got a report. We had discussed at one meeting about carrying. about carrying over nine hundred and forty hours of sick pay in a career, which, I don't know, equated to several months. And that hit us hard here recently, uh, with some retirements, et cetera. I had, I think I recommended to the council that we, we set a limit at sixty or ninety days. What I'll tell you, the report I got, there are two employees that, that have a hundred plus that I would say to be fair to grandfather them. Everybody else is at thirty days or less. So I think sixty days, maybe ninety would be a good number, depending on what y'all would wanna do, if we wanna change that. I didn't get any rebuttal from any of the employees I talked to about it because most of them don't have a lot of sick time hours anyway. So, the council wants to change that in the personnel policy book and we need to have a motion. Any discussion? I think we need to table it. Wanna table it again?
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Table for next.
Okay, the rabies vaccine clinic, we held that, we already talked about that. Status of sealed bids on three city vehicles? Did we get those charged up with your super?
Charged once, but I didn't get the other two. Have said, that's, but I did once, but they're probably not, they're probably done again, probably need done again.
Batteries are toast. Yeah.
Did we advertise for sealed bids on them yet?
No, we're waiting to find out.
See whether they were good.
Oh, we just, well, I need to see if you guys wanna spend some money on some batteries.
Put two new ones in the graveyard.
Right, the rest of them. I'm spending the city's money. I mean, it makes it better.
They're not, they're not doing good.
Well, here's the deal, they're no good dead. I mean, you're not gonna sell nothing that's not gonna crank start run.
But you were gonna try to charge them, you did one.
I've got, well, I've got a battery charger that desulfates and stuff like that and it's, they're no good.
They're all.
Yeah. And that charger won't ruin that, there ain't much that will.
I'll make a motion to, I'm gonna purchase new batteries if people spit.
And I'll get, I'll get some of the cheap eighteen month, the cheapest I can find for it. No, nothing that we normally put in something like an emergency vehicle or something like that. We'll get some of the cheap ones.
Get, see if they run.
Yeah.
Got a motion by Justin to allow Josh to purchase batteries for three vehicles if needed. Second, second by Ernie, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
You listen to, uh, from that.
I need a motion from the council to, uh, for the fire department members that we have Chief Justin Nating, Assistant Chief Ryan Darnell, Captain Nathan Blackledge, Captain Lane Rathgeen, Lieutenant Lane Cavery, and Lieutenant Tate Johnson, along with firefighter, firefighters Andre Appleton, Jeremy Baker, Steve Blackwith, Charlie Bundell, Kyle Darnell, Scott Fagan, Tate Johnson, Zach Llewellyn, Carthage Nash, Dakota Keys, and Connor Wright.
Make that motion.
Motion by Ernie to second, second by Linda, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes and I, I need to appoint Justin as the chief, party chief. So I do so. And I don't think I have you going to forward a list from that, Bill. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Then we have the fire department second quarter run. We have a total of forty-one firemen on eight calls, tallies, uh, twenty-one member attendance for three meetings. Sixty-two times four equals two hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Make a motion, pay.
Motion by Ernie, second by Betsy, all those in favor? All opposed? Pay the bill. Okay, we discussed this a little bit earlier.
Yeah.
Patty had brought this up, I think. We got a policy that needs to be in place with wordage in our policy manual or employee handbook, which covers retired employees who have not yet reached the age of sixty-five. We don't have employees that fall under this. Maybe for a little while. Yeah. Kansas statute says that we shall make coverage available to them. With that being noted, we need to implement it into our existing employee policy manual. The green book. Freedom Claims Insurance is requesting a copy of our information. I'll paraphrase in here.
So we have to get everybody's packet, so they may.
Right.
We just have to have a, a motion for me to sign that.
Or any emotion that we're gonna put this into the green book?
Yep.
Okay, make that motion.
And that was from a twenty twenty-one stat, Kansas statute, so. Yeah, I just need a motion for me to sign this document. And Ernie made it, second by Justin, all those in favor? All opposed? My motion passes. Okay, Willow Street Generator Repair Quote. We already discussed.
Yes, Josh, you can check that out.
Okay. Uh, water tower, water main installation.
Okay, so that's where we had originally the quote from Llewellyn. Then that was rescinded, so we need to know the status of that. What's happening with that?
And we were supposed to have a meeting this week and we haven't had it yet, so we're gonna table that one.
Do we need to re-open that bid?
He wanted to talk to me and Amy, uh, Zach did, about the bid, and I had to move forward.
Yeah, yeah, no, I didn't wanna.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So I'll just table it.
What was that meeting?
Go ahead.
You, you said you was gonna have a meeting?
Zach requested a, a meeting with Amy and I to discuss this part of it, so I, I don't know any details other than that yet.
Does my name before the beat?
Uh, he didn't.
Probably.
That's what I was asking, but.
He didn't ask for you, but I don't have a problem with it.
We're inviting you.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll go with that.
Let me know when.
When I know, yeah. It was supposed to happen before today, but this week it didn't. The Bennett property list. This is something that we've been talking to the, the citizens for months now about the roads in New York, any damage that, that Bennett or my wife did, I don't know, mayor, is he in here? Who?
Anne. She's the one that's got the whale out there.
She's on the list that.
Yeah.
Can I have, I'll give it, hold up.
For all intents and purposes, I, Bennett has left town, we haven't paid him their final money yet, but.
Don't pay them.
Yeah.
They, they said they'd be back.
Yeah, they're coming back.
Well, they come back, I think they can check it.
Right. Right, we haven't given them a final, but it's probably your last chance to file a complaint if you need that done. Okay, Levette Community College Continuing Education Program Agreement. I probably need to sign this, right?
Yes, we'll need a motion to sign that. So that is over the employee getting, um, free tuition through Levette Community College, you guys, every year.
Make that motion.
Okay, I got a motion by Ernie, a second by Josh. All those in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? Motion passes. In the public works somewhere, we all did that. Okay, here's the biggie, put your mic. In your package, you should have had Crystal's wishlist, the ordinance. No, I'm not blaming her.
Go ahead, go ahead, put it on her.
It's easy to do.
No, I didn't have people yelling and screaming at me.
This is an annual ordinance requirement that every first of August, you look at the rates. Crystal's went through, uh.
I do have a comparison though for an electric, against, uh, Twin Valley and Liberty compared to ours.
So if you wanna look at the screen, we compare another electric company with their rate for kilowatt versus what we charge.
I think there's a little misinformation spread on the internet the other day about our rates.
I, I don't know about that.
What'd you say?
I think there's a little misinformation spread on the internet the other day about how they're not comparing that.
It's not, it's not open up here.
Well, what's the difference?
There's moving dollars.
Yes, I can actually find it, so.
It's a PDF, Crystal.
Yeah, it's not open on here. So Twin Valley, um, this bill, they had nineteen oh eight kilowatts per hour. So their bill was three thirty-four seventy-seven. I compare a bill from this last month for nineteen twenty-seven kilowatts here in Chubbe, and it was three twenty-seven twenty-eight. So we are lower than Twin Valley. Liberty is looking at anywhere from a twenty-nine to thirty-nine percent increase. Um, so I projected theirs at thirty-nine percent and seven hundred and nine kilowatts, so that would be negative one hundred and fifty-six sixty-three. Um, ours currently was seven hundred and twelve kilowatts, was one thirty-eight seventy-five.
Yeah, right. Now, if you saw that on the news, they had a town meeting and they're trying to recruit, uh, recap, I don't, millions, millions of dollars off the citizens, which is driving this twenty percent increase. And what was it, twenty to thirty minimum?
Twenty-nine to thirty, I believe. I have a screenshot of it. So if you use five hundred kilowatts, you're looking at a thirty-nine percent increase. If you use fifteen hundred kilowatts, you're looking at twenty-nine to twenty-one five percent increase.
So if you got a five hundred dollar electric bill.
What does, uh, and I'm just asking, what does like Carbondale use a month?
You mean electricity?
Yeah. Like what would be their electric bill? And I don't know, I'm just, I'm just asking someone that uses a lot, that's got freezers and stuff.
I don't know that.
That's Cheryl Barnes. Her electric bill was very high this month.
What I'm just wondering, I mean, and I know we gotta, I mean, stuff's gotta go up every year, but I'm just, if you go.
Was it increased to us? Was the power in the line increased to us?
To us, yeah.
No.
From Liberty?
Yeah, we've got, we've got a fix.
Yeah, we fixed for a while.
So we, do we have to increase it?
We should, I believe, we're falling behind again.
That was, that was our issue years ago, it was so one and a half or three percent.
The auto nerves last year then had.
That was the crying, bang, bang.
Because we were so behind, we don't wanna do that.
But usually we do like five percent on electric, uh, three percent on sanitation, three percent on sewer, five percent on water.
Five percent on water. Electric, we had an increase in years, the last year we did the ten percent.
Yeah.
Well, I, I thought we did five percent every year.
No, we hadn't.
Electric was, electric was tied to whatever Liberty increased that year, so we haven't had a.
Great.
But we're still struggling with our electric funds, so.
Right.
I, I, I think we should be.
It's when we went, when, I mean, I went, we went to a water rate pool, uh, class several months ago, and they said your rates should cover your expenses, your wages.
Main. And if you pay attention to our budget and knowing the things that we've got coming at us to pay for it.
Cause I don't know, your distance is around forty.
I think that, I think that things go, I think things go up all, all the time every year, but I think three percent, we've done a lot of increasing. I think three percent is, I think, a maximum right now.
Well, I know that we added a ten dollar per meter charge on water.
Right. So you're talking about electric, right, Ernie?
Yeah.
Three percent, that's nothing. On the water, I do have this suggestion on it. Our minimum for the first thousand gallons is high compared to other communities that went with this class. So I would say just leave the minimum as it is and just raise the, the next thousand gallons after that.
And what, and what months are we still gonna do that where we set that minimum?
We did that for three years.
Right.
Something like that.
Not the ten dollar fee, the, the minimum.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, we said that ten dollars cover that stem pipe.
I was gonna say, didn't we just do that for that stem pipe? Yeah.
An additional two years.
So I'm like, like, it's three forty-one for in-town residents for the first thousand gallons, and that's about it. Most of your single households or your elderly.
But keep in mind too, that there's, there's a difference between water production and distribution. Our pipe that we gotta change is distribution. Production is where we're kinda, I feel like we're falling behind. Which would be ordinance number nine eighty-five. Every year I've been on council, and Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, but we increased by a certain percentage on every one of them, didn't we?
Not the electric.
Not the electric, all the other, yes.
Well, water and, water and sewer, I mean, we did raise that, I think, the last, uh, year that Tammy was mayor. But we increased that because it was one and three and then we went to three and five.
Three and five, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, but the electric was tied to, when we were buying it from Liberty, it was tied to whenever Liberty increased it. Now Liberty still charged, had the charge in there for getting the electric to the city because it comes through their lines, but that's built into the formula that KMEA
Right.
uh, figures up. And they got that Southwest, uh, tool, that there's a charge on that, but instead of us paying three different places, when we went to KMEA, we just get one bill because they've incorporated all those charges into the, uh, billing.
And I, and I'll add to that. Crystal and I sat in on these KMEA directors meetings and and the council that was here will remember that the contract that we signed, I think expires in twenty-eight and the rates are gonna go up tremendously. Isn't that correct? Remember that?
He said.
Yeah. And we were lucky that we decided to go ahead and extend it then. And it was a big jump from what we had had before, but it cautioned us that it was only gonna get worse. So things will change in another couple of years on what we pay for it. So I guess it's to the council on, on which percentages, on which, uh, ordinances you wanna raise to, if any.
Did water, did we do five percent usually, three and five on water?
Water five, yes.
But do we need to raise sewer too because we're falling?
Yeah, she put averages for the sewer as well, three percent, five percent.
But I mean, our, but, I mean, we just gotta talk to them about that in the budget meeting there, our, or no, our sanitation, I'm sorry.
We just needed, we needed them officers to come back the other way.
What about the dumpster fees? I feel like that thirty dollars is appropriate, but.
Agreed.
With the dumpster.
Yeah. Each time it's empty.
We haven't been raising that, I mean, ever.
No, we raised that a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Five bucks or something like that.
Yes. Yeah, also the charges for, ours is two cubic foot, also has three cubic foot, and they charge forty-five per cubic foot.
Yeah, that's thirty, that thirty's reasonable.
Okay. So somebody, make a motion to us. Do it, Ernie.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to raise electric three percent, sanitation three percent, sewer three percent, and water five percent, I'll second that one.
Three, three, three and five. By Justin. Got a motion, we got a second by Ernie, all those in favor? All those opposed? Speak now for, hold the peace.
Yes, we have, we have no choice.
Well, it's, well, we do, when we watch the budget and see how it works and have everybody hold accountable for their actions and works. Then we're good.
Motion passes.
I did put one other thing on the table tonight. Um, so on the, on the city website, it said we, at one time, we did charge, like, for bulk items, since we don't do bulk pickup no more every month. So we did charge like fifteen dollars for picking up capital appliances.
I think that's, and it's, and it's gotta be kind of fair. You know, I mean, if you have a U-GI, it's, it's gotta be fair.
We're still paying for that tiny toilet ticket, you know?
Right.
Yeah, it's cheap enough, you can't hold on.
No, unless you do it, throw them down X-ray.
Yeah.
We hit on that one.
Go go them down X-ray.
I love this.
That's where they end up.
When you're saying bulk pickup, are you talking about like a couch or chair?
Yeah.
So what if they don't put them out by the curb, but they put them halfway out on the sidewalk? How do we get paid on that? Do we charge their utility bill?
We can add it to, we have a section, so they need to charge what we get added on to.
I thought we made a, a deal on that.
I thought so too, but I see a couch and chair. Over by this man's apartment. In the yard.
But it's, but it's on there, I mean, it's.
It, it's not, it's, yeah, we're not gonna run across their yard and pick up.
Right, right.
Unless you're walking to.
So they call.
That's when this fall, fall under section, we have the sanitation.
And you need a motion on this, Crystal, for the fifteen or whatever, we already do that, I already did.
That's already on there, isn't it?
Okay, 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 good, good, good. All right. Oh, yeah, I, I jumped over there.
So are you guys good with keeping it the way that we have it on the website that you guys did years ago? Fifteen dollars, I believe it is. Are you guys good with keeping that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jason left and I wanted him to be here.
Yeah, yeah. People know that, they charge, and do this for fifteen bucks, nope.
They should, if they look at the website, I mean.
Look at the website.
They should, it's, I look at it all the time.
Okay. I know in ordinance, but there's, uh, some people have a street light in their yard. It's been five dollars a month for as long as I can.
Right, sure.
Street light, yes.
Uh, uh, black light, or whatever they call them.
I'm just saying, we raised the electric how many times and it's five dollars. Still five dollars, Mr. White.
Yeah, but we don't put them up anymore though, we've had people ask for them, we don't do it.
But if there are people that still have them?
Yeah, they get charged five dollars, don't they?
Yeah.
But that's for the whole, isn't it?
That's maybe the electric that goes through it. Yeah, electric goes through it.
Oh, yeah.
So if it, if it's not, it's not running their meter.
Oh, why wouldn't we hook something up with it not going through their meter?
No.
That's why they're.
That's why I'm asking.
Oh, great.
Bringing this up.
My goodness.
So at least we need to consider raising that.
Well, I don't even know if it's LED or not.
No, I guess not.
What do you want to raise that fee to, for five dollars? We don't have.
We just have to jump up, I guess.
The what?
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars for yours?
Would we repair it if it didn't work?
Well, I mean, if it don't work, it's not using any electric, but it's still a job.
Five dollars, five dollars, it doesn't matter whether it was.
A lot of people saying, come get this thing.
They're paying, we are repairing.
We're gonna say, if we're maintaining it, then.
So we want it ten dollars, or what, eight dollars, but?
Ten bucks, I said ten.
So will you come take them out? If you don't want it? Because by the time I pay the ten dollars for.
That's what I was saying, that's, there's gonna be people coming, say, come get this thing.
Three percent charge for everything else, and my electricity's already five hundred dollars for each house.
I agree, I understand you.
I mean. I mean, I know a street light by the bar, man, I can't twenty-six dollars a month. Same with the businesses, I don't know how the businesses are gonna make it. Like, we want, we want revenue in town, we want to keep people here, but I don't, and I get things have got to go up, but. We can't just.
Ultimately, our, our electric cost though is cheaper than anywhere else.
Not on businesses, you charge businesses full money.
We charge more for the electric?
Yeah. They're outside of city limits.
Yeah, yeah.
We pay a higher rate.
Yeah, you are, yeah. No, we're charging more per kilowatt for an electric, business pays more for electric.
The children always have.
I question that, it doesn't cost us anymore on our electric.
I got a business.
I hear from Cheryl saying, she don't know how much longer she can hang on.
Most people give a break to businesses on electric, it's vice versa. I'm not saying we should break, I'm not saying we charge less, I'm just saying most businesses pay less than residents because they use more.
Well, I mean, I could.
I'm not saying we should drop it, but yes, businesses, we pay more.
So are you wanting to leave the street light at five dollars, or you're not?
No, we want to change that to ten.
You want to change it to ten?
Uh, well, no.
What, what about the safety, guys? I mean, think how much Becky's street light's helping everybody else driving now, it's not just helping Becky.
Right. Just, you know?
I just don't know why we would run anything that's not good to me.
Okay, so we're leaving it the same, that, that's what we want.
I didn't have one.
You guys are leaving it the same, five dollars, staying safe, okay?
So, should we maybe think about? Businesses not paying, having to pay more and pay the same.
So the kilowatt.
There was always, there was always something after a year.
Hold on, hold on, if you look at your sheet. It is broken down by residential, industrial, and commercial. And the kilowatt per hour for industrial and commercial is point one two. Your residence is point one four, so you're paying more at your house.
Yeah. Yeah, you're using more.
Outside of the city limits.
Outside is point one four.
It's supposed to try.
I don't think so, I look at my bill, I'm pretty, I don't think I tried.
It's more, I pay a higher rate for that than what in.
Uh, yeah, I don't think I tried, I think my business per kilowatt hours more.
In-town is.
I use half as much electricity now, at my shop, we run a compressor, and it's twice as much in my house.
Outside is.
Well, I know the restaurant was.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's what I'm worried about.
This is a restaurant. You could, it's got coolers, but they need it.
That's why they do that. But, but I, since I pay outs, more outside of town. Okay, so I am one of those, those homeowners that have paid four thousand dollars this last year. To have trees cut down that are dead in all my property, so they don't take out the city utility lines. I'm getting one removed on Thursday. But the person removing it informed me that I can't use, even though I pay for city utilities, I can't use your guys' dump place.
I made a call on it today.
That's what I needed to talk to you about, I need it up there, that's my sending talk. I think we chatted something like that.
Okay, well, I do appreciate that. That's a safety issue. Yes, I, and I do appreciate that because, let me tell you.
Okay, anybody that wants to see the electric, the water, all the rates, you can go online now. And it's ordinance number nine eighty-eight, nine eighty-seven, nine eighty-six, nine eighty-five, and nine seven three. This is why we spent the money, put it online, but you can go look for it, fellas. Or come up and get a copy, but the way this reads. Those are, those are the kilowatt charges. I don't know, if there's a problem with your bill, you need to come up and talk to Crystal.
Well, you work so much, you live in there, so your rate has to be higher.
About sixteen hours a day.
And I don't want to run any business out of business on utilities, but we don't have a lot of choices.
We're all, we're business that has to run.
Yeah.
Yes.
It ain't like we guys.
Well, eventually, we're gonna have to come up with another two hundred thousand dollars to have the primaries and secondary stream base. So, and if he'll be still around doing that, then, if not, it's gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars to do it, which we don't have, so.
Another subject.
Yeah.
So we're gonna leave the, uh, street lights alone?
Yes, no change on the street lights, okay.
Okay, last. No, not last. Next. Turn your page over.
So Jason has addressed the resident concern, correct?
Yes, so I.
On Longmont Street.
Of them, um, they actually got rid of some buckets. After I talked to them, so if there's any more buckets there, then they just filled them up because he dumped the buckets in front of me last month. The buckets that were there, I've already addressed him, adopting buckets, and they dumped three of them on those there last month. And got rid of them.
Blacked up, filled one.
So. Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, so they have, they're gonna have a chance to go and get all of it out because they wired it.
My question is, why are they using the cleaning station out by the ribbon?
Glad, I don't know, he's cleaning them at home, I had a twenty-minute conversation with him the other day, uh, including about the couch. So, um, I've already addressed the issue after I got your, after we got your complaint, but again, we have, we talked about it, we have been here some.
Mail, just tell me.
I agree, I smelled it myself.
That won't immediately go, I haven't seen it, it's been there for. You didn't smell?
No, I smelled it myself, I didn't catch it, so I understand.
Now it's getting hotter, it's gonna get worse.
Okay, I think. If you have further problems, sir, just readdress it with us, should be done, deal. Come back if you still have a problem.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh. Al Robot. Okay, please take podium, sir.
Good evening, guys and ladies. Um, I've actually read it all for you guys, everything on my state, and for those of you in the galley, and for anybody that's watching online. Um, I'm actually gonna change a little bit on my narrative here. Because after hearing tonight's meeting, I am thoroughly convinced that the leadership of this council is doing their job. So any part of the first part of my narrative. I'll just state as a reminder. And so first, let me introduce myself, my name is Hassan, I'm a resident of Chautauqua, I'm a father, a chaplain in training. And I thoroughly believe in the power of local leadership. At small scales that we have. Um, three percent of Chautauqua's population is in this room right now. And that's pretty significant. I want to remind everybody. That Proverbs eleven fourteen states that without guidance, the people will fall. And Chautauqua is not without leadership, these folks up here at this table. Are doing it, and I thank y'all very much. Because based off what I've heard tonight, I think all of you deserve a round of applause. Y'all face a great amount of ridicule from the communities. And I think a lot of it is probably due to poor understanding. Okay? Um, now, in the second part of my narrative here. That I think is where the opportunity lies for improvement, and it is in communication. Effective communication. Is incredibly important in the scope of leadership of any community or any organization whatsoever. And the word effective is an incredibly important part of that, it needs to be effective. And in part of being effective communication, you need to understand that it is a discipline. And that works on both sides, it is not simply a reaction. During my grassroots conversations I've had with folks in the community over the last couple of months, getting to know some of the folks. It has been very clear to see that not many people have had practice with effective communication. And that comes with issuing a complaint or a grievance, and then addressing those complaints or grievances. Chautauqua lacks suppress. And one of the unfortunate things is, is your main mode of communication from city leadership and the community is Facebook group. And I think that should be taken much more seriously than it appears to be. Um, in forms of moderation and things of that nature, I did hear today that y'all aim to have, uh. Ms. Amigas maintain her kind of position and moderation over that Facebook group. Um, I'll visit with her a little bit about that, uh, just to kind of help with that. In my experience on that particular side of things. There are a lot of hateful words, though, that are unnecessary and. And anytime that type of stuff is generated, it turns away. And just makes people shy away from the conversation, they can no longer take you seriously if you are coming with. Hateful rhetoric. Um, and I want to point out. First Timothy four twelve. Because it calls on us all to be an example. In speech, in conduct, in love, in faith, in purity. We need to try to be consistent in that example, all of us. As a community, not just city managers, not just civilians, but as a whole. In talking to one with one another, we are not enemies here. We are neighbors, we should remember that. This conversation about the electrical stuff and the great heights and everything else, you know what, that was, I was just sitting enthusiastically listening to it. That, that excited me, and it gave me a lot of faith, encouragement, encouragement in you guys. Because y'all are thinking open-mindedly and broad-mindedly enough to consider all the little nuances of a three percent versus a five percent rate difference. And that's something that I hope you folks in the galley, you folks at home acknowledge in your leadership. Because it would be really easy just to say five percent done, and they didn't do that. So I actually will conclude myself really quickly. Because of what I saw tonight, I'm very proud to be a membership of them. I'm happy to see what I saw tonight. And so in that conclusion, I'll just remind you guys, and hopefully encourage you guys. Leadership, communication, responsibility. Responsibility is response plus ability. And that accounts all of us. The trust that the community has for its city managers. Is rebuilt through communication and shared responsibility. In the coming weeks, I plan to be. Developing a proposal for a volunteer civic worker, and I'm educating myself on the Kansas Main Street program. Once I'm done with that, I will be returning to the city council for you guys to review those, and hopefully get your support on us. The idea about needing new business and coming in, business owners and stuff like that, we don't want to shy anybody away, we want to encourage some of that. Walking through Main Street, I have been here two years, and it doesn't take someone even six months to realize that there is a lot of buildings now on Main Street that need a lot of work. And if I wanted to come run a business, I wouldn't even know which building to pick. So I think that Kansas Main Street program, uh, is something to look at. And once I've got much more information, because I just heard about it today, actually, uh, I will bring it forward to you guys. So it is my prayer that we move together in leadership that serves, in communication that connects. And responsibility that is shared between city managers and the community, say it three times.
Thank you for your input. Lastly. Justin and Linda and I sat in on a job interview Saturday night for the police department. I think we have a, another very valuable candidate. I don't know that there was any, any downside to this young man, uh, he's willing to move into the community if he can find living conditions acceptable, but, uh, he, he was very impressive in his interview, I'll just say that to everyone, and, uh, I'd be proud to have him in our community, so. With that, I'd like to go ahead and put that to the council to go ahead and hire.
You in a motion?
His name is.
Devon?
Devon, I don't.
Amen.
A M A N?
A M A N, but it's pronounced amen.
Okay, amen.
Make the motion to hire Devon Amen as a new police officer for City of Chautauqua.
Second. Got a motion by Ernie, second by Justin, to hire Devon, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, and please inform him that he's been hired. Welcome to Chautauqua.
When are you gonna start then?
They'll be here tomorrow morning, for orientation, just for orientation, so he'll start himself next week. But he, he's gonna try to come up and do orientation tomorrow morning, so we can get that out of the way.
See, is he getting numbered a week or two?
So he's with another company now, and they are ready for that, okay, to head back before he's wanting to do something.
I don't know.
He does have, he's worked for the, uh, whole police department, he's actually a police detective since you're.
I mean, some of these men through police.
He has been to the department, he's got, he's allowed to go to full-time, he's worked hard side there, uh, he's worked almost here, daytime, so without having.
Oh, what?
Yeah, we need all of them, except that big town.
Is there a spring saving executive still or anything? No.
Works at my house, ten, fourteen, the other, it's all my house, I finished it.
Okay.
Yeah, five.
So that's the, you know?
We'll find you the house. We'll find you the house, thirty, or what we had, we said.
I got a motion by Linda, as you're adjourned, second, second by Ernie, all those in favor? All opposed?